Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the joint public hearing for Douglas County, Nebraska. Request that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Dan Esch. I'm the Douglas County Clerk. We do have the Open Meetings Act on the wall right here. There is an external defibrillator in the back, on that back wall, kind of off to my There are QR codes around the room that if you are able to use it, it will take you a link to the presentations that each of the political subdivisions are going to be going over this evening. I just want to remind everybody, this is being recorded and broadcasted on Douglas County's livestream and then on Cox Channel 18. We do have ASL interpreters here, and thank you for coming. So when you approach the mic, it'd be appreciated if you could state your name and address slowly and clearly for the interpretation. There is a public comment period, and if you want to speak, there is a sign-in sheet outside, which you all should have got an opportunity to do, but there was a checkbox. If you wanted to speak, you should check that box. And then, when the time for the public comment period comes, I will call up members of the public by the order which they are listed on the sign-in sheet. But first, we have presentations from all the political subdivisions, and so we're going to do that before we get into the public comment period. And the last few things, I just wanted to remind people of some stuff. There's no voting on anything tonight. These political subdivisions are just providing presentations explaining their budget and tax rate requests for next year. These are proposed tax rates, and basically, these political subdivisions, after tonight's public hearing, all political subdivisions in the state of Nebraska have until September 30th to finalize their tax rates and submit their budget statements to the state of Nebraska by September 30th. One final thing, just judging by some of the emails and phone calls we've been getting, I know a lot of folks are concerned about their property valuation. You know, tonight's hearing is about these political subdivisions and their budgets and their property tax requests for next year. But I'm sure people are going to want to talk about their property valuations. I'll be honest, I'm not going to stop you from doing that, but I just want people to be aware that this is not an opportunity to officially contest your 2023 property valuation. All those deadlines for 2023 have already passed, but we do have a handout out front. It's called Important 2024 Dates Regarding Property Valuations, and we just wanted to give people kind of a timeline for the opportunities you have next year to contest your property valuation. So I appreciate your time, and we're going to get started. First, we'll have a presentation from the city of Omaha.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jean Stotter, Mayor of the city of Omaha. To start, I wanted to give this presentation myself tonight, but I wanted to let you all know that I had back surgery less than two weeks ago. I had a lumbar laminectomy and a spinal fusion, and I not only can't stand, I can't sit too long. So unless there is a bed in here tonight, I'm going to have to get this presentation and leave, but my finance director will be here for the whole evening, so I apologize, but I'm very uncomfortable right now. But the city of Omaha's 2024 budget approved last week by the city council includes $226,465,570 in property tax revenue. The total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed value by 10.3%. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new assessed value of property, would be .42379 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The city of Omaha proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be .45733 cents per $100,000 of assessed value. Based on the proposed property tax request changes and other revenue, the city of Omaha total operating budget, including the capital, will exceed last year's budget by 11.3%. Now, I want to tell you, since I've been mayor in 2013, my goal over the year-over-year increase has been 4% or less. I will go into detail in a few minutes why this is higher than it normally or has been an average of. To attain more information regarding the increase in property tax requests, citizens can contact the city of Omaha at 402-444-5416, or they can email budget@cityofomaha.org. We spend tax dollars on programs and services that best serve our citizens and align with our priorities, always with an emphasis on public safety and at the same time, keeping taxes as low as we can. Here you go. Thank you. He's my IT guy here tonight. Since my first year in office, which was in 2013, we have reduced the city property tax rate four times, for a total of approximately 8.5%. We have also not implemented a 3.5 cent levy increase that the voters overwhelmingly approved with our 2020 bond issue to fund our roads, and it has resulted in an unprecedented ongoing program to sustainably increase our road repairs. And I want to stress that 3.5 penny tax increase was approved by the voters, and we have not done that. Through the end of this summer, we will have spent and committed on an additional $163 million of roadwork in the city of Omaha because of that bond issue passing. This work is being completed through excellent project management without the voter authorized tax increase. This is a significant savings for the taxpayers. The city of Omaha's share of your property tax bill, and he's going to go to the next slide, right there, is approximately 21%. So when you look at your property tax bill on a whole, approximately 21% of that goes to the city of Omaha. As you can see on this diagram, the greatest share of your property tax payment supports education, which is about 61% of your property tax bill goes to education. All of the other taxing indices in Douglas County share the remainder. With our 21% of your property taxes that the city receives, we fund and pay for the police and fire departments, the libraries, the parks, parks maintenance, street repair and resurfacing, trash collection, wages for employees, employee health, and a lot more. This year, our largest budget increase will pay for higher salaries for the Omaha Police Department. The declining pool of law enforcement candidates is a national public safety crisis, and we are addressing that in our 2024 budget. The Omaha Police Department is currently budgeted for 906 officers. However, 807 sworn officers are currently on the job. That's 99 less than what our budgeted number is. Higher competitive salaries will improve recruitment, hiring of new officers, and retain experienced officers, and this is definitely an investment in our public safety and your public safety. When you call 911, you expect a response. The high cost of this salary increase outweighs the risk that we will face if our police department is not adequately staffed. Our next recruit class begins October 2nd, and this puts it in perspective. We can have a class up to 60 recruits. We will have 19 in this class. That's all we have, and that clearly shows the severity of the staffing crisis. Compared to other law enforcement agencies in Nebraska before the salary increase, Omaha ranked 13 in the state of Nebraska for entry-level pay. We are the largest agency in Nebraska, and we must remain the best. Now it is time to address property valuations. State statute requires the Douglas County assessors to set property values based on 92 to 100% of fair market value. Unpredictable and unexpected increases are unaffordable for many of our citizens, and I know that's why most of you are here tonight. Even with four city of Omaha levy reductions, many taxpayers never benefit because the valuation increases are so significant. Property should be revalued annually to avoid these big swings. For example, the verified valuation from Douglas County Assessor shows that the average increase of existing property in Omaha was just 2.7% in the last 10 years, the average. So in some years, it was down or flat; in other years, it was much higher. That explains a lot of that. A system that taxpayers could pay for would absolutely help. And lastly, I have heard some say, "If we were not building a streetcar, we could lower our property taxes significantly more." However, I will tell you, nothing could be further from the truth. There is no property tax revenue to be used for a streetcar, no sales tax, no new taxes will be used to operate and construct and maintain the streetcar. I take the responsibility very, very seriously of managing your tax dollars, and I do so with transparency and commitment to excellence taxpayers always expect. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really do appreciate your interest and the time that you spend coming here tonight and listening. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Stotter. Okay, next up is the city of Ralston.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, I timed that just perfectly bad, sorry. I was just going to let, for folks who just came in, there are some seats up front if you wanted to sit closer, so thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I am Rick Hoppy. I'm the Ralston City Administrator. First off, are there any Ralston residents in the audience? Please? Yes, very good. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate that. I guess I should probably just stare at you the whole time, and everyone else, I'm hoping, will put up with me a little bit. Let's start with the good news first. By the way, let me do a couple introductions. Our mayor is here, Mayor Don Grosser. Our finance director, Tim Bowley, is here, and if any of you didn't get a paper copy of this presentation, would like one, go see Tim. He's got a stack in his hands. So let's start off the good news right off the bat. The city of Ralston is dropping our levy by 3 cents from 69.7 cents to 66.7 cents. The exact number, you can see underneath. I'm kind of a rounded numbers guy. Our finance director is to-the-penny guy, and that's why he's not doing the presentation. That's about a 3-cent reduction, and we did a cent last year, so it's 4 cents over two years. And it's part of the council and mayor's plan to drop the levy a little bit each year in an attempt to try to get the tax burden reduced on our citizens, so I think you can count on us continuing to do this over the next several years. I do think it's sort of important, before we talk a little bit about what Ralston plans to do in the upcoming year, is to understand a little bit about what the state law says, which impacts all the people up here and their presentations. The state legislature, in setting up this meeting, really has set a marker for what they consider an acceptable amount of property tax dollars to increase from one year to the next, and that has two parts. The first part is inflationary growth. Legislature says, "You get 2% more than you did last year to cover inflationary costs." Employees generally cost more, goods and services cost more, legislature recognized that, and they said 2% is that number. Now, that is an impact on current ratepayers. The other piece of this, though, is the new growth component. So whenever a new business or a new home is built, or an addition put on a new home, that is generally considered new growth, and those dollars, the legislature, I think, rightfully said, "Because you're trying to grow your economy, we excuse those from the calculation on how much you can spend one year to another." So they're setting a figure that says, "Hey, you can go up this much in total each year," and we think that's an acceptable amount. So when you take the inflationary growth of 2%, and the 4.6% we experience in new growth in Ralston, we've really focused on that in the last few years. We've got a big, major redevelopment project near our downtown stretching to 72nd Street that really has amped our growth. So when you take those two portions together, the state is saying, "Ralston, you can go up 6.6% in property tax dollars from the year previous." Now, what we did go up in the upcoming budget of '23-'24 is 8.8%, or about 2.2% over that max calculation the state is telling us we can go up to. That amounts to $312,000. That's the 8.8%. You can see there that that's 3.85 million in the upcoming budget year, and the previous year was 3.514. And before anyone says those numbers don't match up, that's the magic surrounding. Okay, so let's take just a little bit closer look at what that means in context of the state law. So I just said, next year, we're going to spend $312,000 more than the previous year. But the state has those two pieces. They would take off that number that in their mind is an excusable reason to have more property tax dollars. The one I mentioned was new growth, at 4.6%, and that's $163,000 for us. The other one is the inflationary increase of 2%, and that's about $70,000 for us. So if you take those two numbers out of the 312, what you're left with is $79,000, and that's essentially the reason the city of Ralston is here tonight. That's $79,000, and we owe you an explanation as to what we are doing with those dollars. But before I get to that explanation, we do have a piece that state law also requires to us, and Mayor Stotter talked a little bit about this for the city of Omaha. Legislature also wants to hear if you took 0% growth on your property tax dollars. In short, we spent exactly the same amount we did the year previous and applied it to the new valuation of the upcoming year, what could you make the levy? In our case, that levy would be 61.3 cents, but just to be clear, even the state itself recognized that 0% isn't really attainable, or they wouldn't have set the criteria for new growth plus inflationary growth. Okay, so where are we spending the additional dollars and the property tax dollar growth that we're seeing in our city budget? There's two main areas. One is infrastructure. Ralston has a couple of major infrastructure issues that are going to have to be dealt with in the last couple of years, or, excuse me, the next couple of years. We had a major sewer collapse on a line that runs along our Burlington Avenue just off 72nd Street. And after the engineers got a hold of it and took a look at it, it's a hundred-and-some-year-old sewer, it's going to have to be replaced. And while we hope to garner a lot of those dollars off our sewer rates and by applying for some other things, some property tax dollars are particularly going to have to pay for the engineering and some of the planning behind this, and that project is 4.5 to 6.5 million dollars. It's just so big that we've got to start putting aside dollars in the budget to do that, and our upcoming budget, some of those additional property tax dollars are being set aside for that purpose. The other big project is continued investment in our streets. Before I came here, before Tim was the finance director, Ralston was not adequately investing in its streets. I think the previous elected officials were trying. They needed to get a plan together. We were able to do that, and so we're now putting a lot more dollars into streets than we have in the past, and that has really helped save taxpayer dollars because streets are awfully expensive when you let them deteriorate to the point where you have to completely replace them. If you can repair them, it's always cheaper, so we're trying to spend more dollars in that spirit. Now, Mayor Stotter really hit the nail on the head about people. I'll get to public safety in a moment, but the challenge we're facing in the city of Ralston right now is public works personnel. If you can fix a street, fix a sewer, or you have a commercial driver's license, you're a hot property right now. In our last two years, our ability to keep people on the job at public works has been very difficult. We've had to raise salaries quite a bit to compete with other city governments and the private sector. Those folks are making quite a few more dollars than we're in the past. Don't begrudge them anything. They work very hard, and I'm happy to pay them, but it does put a little strain on the budget. The other piece that we're starting to try to prepare for is just what the mayor talked about in terms of public safety and police officers. It is hard right now to get someone to join a police force. In fact, we just put out a notice for a new officer, and in years past, we would literally get dozens of applications. This year, we got five, and several of them weren't real well-qualified. So the pool is growing ever smaller, and it's very clear that one of the issues behind this is wages. Our police contract is up next year, and in light of the fact the city of Omaha and the city of Lincoln are going to spend considerably more dollars on their police officers, that really does put some inflationary pressure on the dollars that we in turn pay police officers in order to keep them on board. So that's what we're doing with the additional dollars in this presentation that we've been talking about. That's kind of the down and dirty of it. My name and phone number and email address are in this presentation, and certainly write it down if you wish. I'm always happy to talk to anyone that wants to chat more about this and wants to hear why we're doing the things we're doing. Appreciate you all being here tonight, and look forward to your comments after we're done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rick. Next up is Douglas County.
Okay, I got it. Good evening. My name is Lori Persch. I am the finance director for Douglas County as of July 1st of this year, and I am here to take you through the budget for the year and the tax levy, so hopefully this is helpful to you. So I'm going to start with, where does that total pool of property tax dollars, how does that get split? So I took, this is an instance of a Douglas County resident who is also a resident of the city of Omaha and within the Omaha Public School District, and you can see that the largest chunk of this individual's property tax dollars go to support the public schools. Now, this would be very similar, I selected Omaha Public Schools for the example, but it's very similar with Millard or District 66. It looks about the same. So over half will go to support the public schools. As Mayor Stotter mentioned, 21% goes to the city of Omaha, and Douglas County only gets 13% to provide all of the services that you expect from the county, so the sheriff, corrections, 911, you know, the DMV, all these other things that we provide. So, and then the remaining 10% is doled out to the other smaller subdivisions, so you've got the Public Building Commission, the National Resources District, Metro Community College, the ESUs, and Metro Area Transit. This chart here shows what the tax levy has been over the last 10 years, and we have had just one increase five years ago. That was a very targeted increase, and that was specifically for the Juvenile Justice Center next door that was dedicated solely to that project. You will note that the column on the far right is in blue because that is a preliminary number. The actual final tax levy will be set on Tuesday at the Board of Commissioners meeting this coming Tuesday. So this shows, this next slide here is a history of the change in taxable valuation for Douglas County over the last 20 years. You can see that it has gone up and down quite a bit. From 2011 to 2015, it was quite small. Increases were 0 to 1%. Those were probably pretty challenging budget years for the Director of Finance. That was before my time. For the last five years, the increases have ranged between 5% and 7%. And then, of course, given what's been going on in the real estate and property markets, of course, I'm sure you're all aware that we've had higher-than-usual increases, and this year, the valuations increased 12%, 12.2%. So this next slide is the chart that's required by state statute. It shows the property taxes from prior year and the prior year rate, as well as the percent change in the certified taxable value that we just talked about, and the property tax rate that would levy the same amount of property taxes as the prior year. And then it shows the preliminary tax request and the preliminary property tax rate, again, which will be set, the final rate, which will be set on Tuesday. So this pie chart shows the total source of all revenues for Douglas County. Most governmental entities are kind of a three-legged stool. This is an analogy that the former finance director used, but I think it kind of explains things pretty clearly. Most governmental entities will have property taxes, income taxes, and sales tax. Douglas County only has one of those available. We do not have an income tax. We do not have a sales tax. We have to provide all the services that everybody expects from the county on just the property taxes. So you can see that property tax creates about 50%, roughly, not quite, almost 50% of the total revenue that we use to provide the services to the citizens of Douglas County. The rest could come from departmental fees and revenues, and about 5% comes from that inheritance tax, the inheritance tax fund. So the county's fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, and like I said, I started on July 1st, and on July 11th, the board adopted the budget for the '23-'24 fiscal year. I'm going to walk through a couple of the assumptions in that budget. So first of all, the budget assumed no increase in the tax levy. In fact, it assumed no change. Again, that is a preliminary assumption. Final tax levy will be set next week. The budget also assumed a 9% increase in total county assessed property values. The actual increase came in at 12.2%, so quite a bit higher than historic. The total budget was roughly 503 million, 4.9% above last year's final modified budget, which is a little bit higher than, you know, a lot of us would like to see, but it is actually, if you look at inflation for the previous 12 months, for the rolling 12 months up through September of 2023, in the state of Nebraska, so I'm not talking just national inflation, but, you know, specific to us, that was 6.3%. So that 4.9% is, you know, somewhat in the ballpark there. In addition, we had 52 million of ARPA funding. That's the American Recovery Plan Act. That's the federal stimulus bill that was to aid in public health and economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. So that is a bucket of federal dollars, not your tax dollars, I mean, not your property tax dollars, and that is obviously a one-time, you know, not something that we expect to get recurring and ongoing, but nonetheless, part of our budget. The next bullet talks about the general fund budget. That is the biggest chunk of the overall budget. The general fund is our operating fund, so that's the main, the primary fund that your property tax dollars are. And that is 263 million, which is 5.4% above last year's. Again, to the same thing that Mayor Stotter and Mr. Hoppy from Ralston talked about, primarily that is driven by salaries and wages. There are two areas in specific that have been kind of a challenge for us to keep staffing in at the county, and you're probably familiar with, of course, the nursing shortage. So nurses, we had to do something to, you know, be able to keep our nurses. And then, secondly, we have, over at the corrections center, we have, you know, we have 1,200 to 1,300 people at the detention center every evening, every night, and we have to have prison guards and corrections officers to, you know, handle that population and care for those folks, and so we were having a challenge retaining corrections officers. We had to adjust salaries there, too, so that accounts for a lot of that increase. The last bullet talks about, of course, the final valuation that was certified on August 20th, and then the final tax rate, which will be set next week. So because we try to be as, you know, fiscally responsible as we can, the Office of Finance and Budget sets some parameters. So we told all of the departments, you have, you get a 2.5, up to a 2.5% increase for salaries and a 1.5% increase for all else. And all departments within Douglas County were able to stay at or below that level except for these six offices, these six departments. These folks had to come in front of the county board and explain why, in order to provide the services that they need to provide, that they weren't going to be able to make the 2.5% for salaries and the 1.5% for all else. So those departments were the sheriff, the county attorney, public defender, civil service, emergency management, and county court. You will note that four of those six are part of the criminal justice system, and we have found that, not just in Nebraska, but kind of, you know, nationwide, that expenses in the criminal justice area are growing faster than inflation, and it's kind of been a challenge for many governments. Of the 1.76 million over target, those represent about 1.36 million of that. So that is all I have today. So if anybody has any questions after, not right now, you can't take questions now, but at the end, feel free to find me, and I'll be happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next up is Metropolitan Community College.
Can you make it a little bigger up there? Big as you can.
So there we go. And then you can just go back and forth like that.
It just goes forward, right?
Correct.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Randy Schmazel, the Community College President at Metro Community College. I have two guests with me tonight from the college. Fred Yui, the Board Chair, he's from Sarpy County, and Jim Thibodeau, the Internal Legal Counsel. It's important to note that Metro serves four counties in our area, Sarpy, Douglas, Dodge, and Washington. And I'd like to mention tonight a number of tax credits and what we've been doing with the legislature. So over the last three years, we worked with our Board of Governors, the Legislature, and the Governor's Office to begin a process to lower property tax contribution to Metro Community College. And these reductions take the form of income tax credits, which you don't get those right away, so they're not the best idea, but at least they save you some money in the end, and a thing called the Community College Future Fund, which I'll speak more about here in a few minutes. I brought my card with me tonight. We all got these cards if you live in the four counties or everybody, any county, 93. But Metro's property tax has stayed at 7.5 cents for the general fund since 1993. Now, we all know that that doesn't mean that our money stays the same. It goes up based on your valuation. So yes, we've, we've acquired more valuation based on even staying the same. Two cents also goes for capital. It goes for maintenance of our buildings, renovation, capital. One thing important about Metro Community College, when you drive by our campuses, you see many really nice-looking educational facilities for the trades. We have no bond issue. I personally went out and raised $250 million, so you don't have a bond issue. And to have a bond issue would be across the four counties for a vote, and that might be pretty hard for people in Fremont to vote for something in Bellevue. So we have done a really good job through our local donations to do that. So the example I have, I brought tonight, and that may be hard to read up there, is for every $100,000 of property valuation, our 9.5 cents generates $95. So if your property is worth $100,000, you pay $95 in taxes to Metro. On your tax statement, Metro's going to be either 3% of it, 4% of it, or 5% of it, based on what school districts you live in and cities you live in. So if it goes up $10,000, your valuation this year, you're going to pay $9.50 more to Metro. And I didn't want to forget when mine went up. My property went up $18,000, so I owed 17 more dollars to Metro Community College, and that's based on that 9.5 cent calculation. So really, for every dollar that your valuation, I mean, every thousand dollars your valuation goes up, you're going to pay an extra dollar to Metro. The money that we receive from property taxes is one of many resources that we have. It doesn't fund the whole college, not even close. Our limit that we can tax is 11.25 cents, and our board back in 93 elected that. We're not going to go that far. We're going to try to make 9.5 cents work. So we basically have stayed there. One of the things that is really important tonight, and if you don't, you know, pay attention to anything I say tonight, pay attention to this one, and it's what the card doesn't tell you. So your 22 taxes that you're going to file in April of '24, there's a 50% tax credit that you'll receive. So when you get ready to file your state taxes, please make sure you apply for the credit, because if you pay $400 to Metro, you're going to get a $200 credit back. So you only pay $200 to Metro at that time. In '23, this is really something you need to be aware of. In April of '25, you're going to pay your 23 assessed valuation that's on your card tonight. You're going to get 100% tax credit. It's either going to be a tax credit, or it's going to be from the state of Nebraska from this Community College Fund. And the way this fund is going to work is, in the future, there's only going to be two cents on your, our card for Metro, and that's the capital money. The 7.5 cents is not going to be. So you're going to get taxed $20 on a $100,000 house, and you're going to get tax credit for it. So the good news is, in the projected estimate for your taxes to Metro and property in '24, '25 is zero. You know, Metro, I'm going to say this because I think it's a fact, we're not the largest problem on your tax statement, but we're a problem, because you still have to pay property tax. A dollar's a dollar. So in '22, '23, our property tax generated about $65 million, and this is our actual general fund budget, that you can go online, and I'll give you the site at the end, and you can look at it. And this year's valuation went up 13%. And that surprised us. That was a large valuation. And the problem we run into at Metro is in the last 18 months, our enrollment's gone up about 20%. And the problem that we have, the biggest problem we have at the college, the same problem you have in your own household, and that is, if you look at our budgeted expenditures here, we only went up 2% in personnel cost. Where everybody's giving a lot of high wages and everything, Metro tried to hold a line on it. Our operating expense went up 15%, and that's where we buy supplies and, you know, pay for electricity and do all the things you do in your household. Our supplies and materials went up 11%, which is the supplies we use in the classroom and that. And our equipment, equipment's not cheap. Our equipment for our trades classes went up 49%. So the good news is, you get a 50% tax credit. Next year, you get 100% tax credit. And if I'm really lucky, I won't be here the year after that, because you're not paying any taxes to Metro. But I wanted to really give our credit to the Legislature, the Governor, and our board, because we plugged at this, and plugged at this, and plugged at this as an example of how tax relief could be provided to all of us. I'm a lifelong Nebraskan, so the older I got, the harder taxes became for me to understand and appreciate. So we pay a lot of taxes. So I, I appreciate you all coming tonight, and my last question is more about, how many people have ever been involved in Metro? Wow. Thank you. I always ask that question when in big groups, and I always get a good response. So Metro's going to continue to move forward. We are very hopeful that, you know, capitalization, we can continue with our donations. And here's our website that you can go to. We've posted our budget on the website for a long time. There's also a phone number on your card that goes to Jim Thibodeau. Jim, raise your hand so I can see you, this guy that answers your phone. And we, we try our best to call back everybody that contacts us. That's who we are. So I'll be around after the meeting tonight, and if there's more questions, and I think you all will be able to make your presentations and hopefully get your questions answered. So hey, thanks a lot for, for coming tonight. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, next up is Bennington Public Schools.
I'm the Superintendent at Bennington Public Schools. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. I was going to roll through several bits of information about our school system. To begin with, just want to hit the main data. That is our property tax request for this upcoming school year is $34,964,374. We had an incredible property assessment increase this year of 20.98%, with so much growth up in north, north part of the, the county. Our tax rate, if the levy had remained the same this year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value, would be $117.8362 per $100 evaluation. Bennington Public Schools is proposing to adopt a property tax request this year that causes the tax rate to be $135.8 cents per $100 evaluation. Based on the proposed property tax request, changes in other revenue, our total operating budget at Bennington Public Schools is going to decrease by 5.79%. The reason for that is the budget also includes Special Building Fund, which helps pay for, we had six bond issues that have passed over the course of the last 15 years, and we were under construction last year, so the budget last year was inflated to pay for the building that had passed in a bomb. So that's why it looks a bit funny. For more information on that, you can contact me at 402-238-3400, or aplaz@benpes.org. Digging into the numbers just a little bit deeper, our general fund last year, or this year, we are requesting $24.5 million, which equates to 95.2 cents of property taxes. That's down from the $0.05 that we were last year, generating just over $2 million. Our bond fund, again, we've passed six bonds over the last several years, and so our bond payments continue to increase in there, and so we're asking just over $8.7 million for bond payment. We've held the levy there at 34 cents. Special Building Fund is one that we have not been able to tax much into over the years, but we are requesting 4.8 cents there. That'll generate 1.2 million. That would both be for operation maintenance of current facilities, or if additional bonds were passed, we'd be able to offset those bonds with these funds. And last year's QC Puff, another bond that was passed, or another bond that we've been paying on over the last 10 years. We were able to drop the request to 1.8 cents this year, generating $463,000, and we hope to pay that off here in the near future. I wanted to talk a little bit about just our statutory limits for school districts. I wanted to outline four of them. The first one is our general fund and special building fund. Schools are capped at $1.05 per $100 evaluation in the school system, and we are proposing with this to be at $1 between those two, two funds. Budget authority, which is provided to us by NDE minus our special education certain allowances, says that the school district would be able to spend $45,740,84, and we're right at that budget authority. While our cash reserve limit is limited to 25% for a school district of our size, and so NDE tells us that we're allowed to have a cash reserve of 13.1 million, where our cash reserve that we're proposing is only 11.4 million. The last one is a new one, and that is your property tax request authority. And so the way the system works now is you're allowed 3% revenue growth, and so if you receive additional state funds, your property taxes would go down. If your state funds would decrease, your property taxes, you'd have more authority to do so. And so there's a, kind of a formula for that, and this year, there is the first time that that's been rolled out. And based on that, our property tax authority is actually 26.7 million, but we are only going to be requesting 25.7 million this year. So we're not quite to our property tax authority request. You can't talk about Bennington Public Schools without, without starting with growth. We are one of the fastest-growing school districts, not just in the state of Nebraska now, but in the history of the, of the state of Nebraska, rivaling with a Millard, Gretna, Elkhorn over the last 20, 30 years as well. And so we have gone from just over 1,900 students in 2014 to 10 years later having 4,200 students. Our, that growth is estimated to continue, and we're anticipating over 5,000 students by '27, '28. No school system is really designed to handle being doubled in size over the course of 10 years. That's why, as we talk about bonds and we talk about QC Puff bonds, that's why we're there. We're trying to build facilities fast enough to house the number of students that we're receiving every single year. And so our budgetary needs are just a little bit different than a lot of places. Digging into our property tax request for this year, and I'm, I'm not going to go over the levies since we already talked about those, but our total levy would be $1.35.8 this year. That would be the lowest levy that we've had in 12 years, and our general fund levy going down to 95 cents would be the lowest that we've had in 17 years. You know, we fully recognize that our valuation is significantly more than our, our levy decrease, but we're doing the best we can while trying to provide for our students in the unique environment that we do with the growth that we have. So we are excited to be able to reduce that levy 6.76 cents. When you pull all of our funds together, you'll see our property taxes account for about 46% of our total revenues. Our state receipts account for 33% of our revenues, and then we have some other, our federal receipts account for about 2%, and our other local at 4%. When we look at our expenditures, again, we're just going to be a little bit different than some, where our general fund, of our total general fund is about 61%, which would be lower than most, because our bond fund is 18%. Our QC Puff fund is another 5%. That's us trying to catch up with the facilities based on the growth of students. And so our, our pie charts look a little bit different. I did want to take just a second, kind of explain how the equalization aid system works in the state of Nebraska, because Bennington Public Schools, we are extremely reliant on equalization aid at 27.09% of our basic funding. And how that works essentially is, as our valuation increases, the following year, our state aid decreases, until it gets to a point that you have enough valuation that you no longer need state support. And so we are always kind of one year behind of as valuation increases, the following year, we know that our state aid is going to decrease. And so we're trying to do the best that we can. Because we, we, we obviously have a fairly high levy throughout the state of Nebraska, but we do not put as much into our general fund, which would be our general education of students. Our general fund's how we pay for our teachers, our programming, our textbooks, and our supplies, all of those things. We are the lowest spending per pupil on actual general fund in the state of Nebraska. And so we are spending $2,990 less per student than the average school and operating at about 79% of the state average. And so we do obviously have a high tax levy. A lot of that goes into facilities, significantly less than every other school in the state of Nebraska goes into our general fund. Couple items of note, I just wanted to say, just as we continue, hold on, I think I skipped a slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Just a couple of quick items of note before I wrap up. We don't necessarily always budget in a one-year period. We look at things over multiple-year periods because of that equalization aid system. As our valuation increases, our state aid is going to decrease, and so we can't do things in a one-year silo. We have to do it over multiple years. And so this year, we did lose just under a half million dollars in state aid. That was the first state aid decrease in, in over 10 years for the school system, which is telling us that our valuation is starting to catch up to the total number of students that we have. But it, what it does is it obviously puts a strain on our property taxes. Our estimated decrease with the big valuation increase this year of 21%, between that and our new school adjustment, which I'll explain here in a minute, we're estimating about a $2.6 million loss next year. And so we're trying to make sure that we're not only have what we need to educate our students this year, but also the following years. The new school adjustment with that bond that was passed in, in 2020, the state provides some additional funding as you open a new building. And so our school system received about $2.5 million last year in additional state funding to open the building, which, you know, is great, and it helps our property taxpayers. In '23, '24, that gets cut in half, so we're down to 1.2 million. Next year, it goes to zero. And so we've got to be able to make that up, obviously, throughout the, the course of years, and so that contributes to our long-term vision. As of this moment, when we look at a three-year lens, we're going to lose about $7 million. There's a lot of assumptions in there on valuation and student growth that we don't absolutely know at this moment, but that's where we're at at this moment. In addition, we're going to lose about $900,000 in federal aid next year. That would be the ESRA funds that we have received over the last several years. Those come off next year, and so we're trying to look at this over a multi-year period to ensure that we also don't have huge swings in our levy, because that, that's not great for our taxpayers either. Appreciate you guys all being here. We have additional information on our website. If you want to go to our Bitly, that's bit.ly/bpsfinancialinfo, you'll find a lot more insight into each one of these topics, where we've tried to outline what that looks like for our school system compared to the state, compared to the metro, and just to provide a little bit more detail. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you being a part of this. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you being a part of this.
Thank you, Aaron. And our last presentation before the public comment period is Omaha Public Schools.
Good evening. My name is Shane Ryan. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Omaha Public Schools. With me here this evening is Mr. Spencer, Head President of the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education, Interim Superintendent Mr. Matthew J. Ray, and other members of the Omaha Public School staff. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the property tax request for Omaha Public Schools for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. As Dr. Plaz from Bennington Public Schools said, school district budgets are highly regulated by state statute. We've had two major historical statutory limits on the growth of levies and general fund expenditures. And new this year, we have a limit on the growth of overall revenue for the district that is very impactful to how we develop our budgets. The combined general fund and special building fund levy of a dollar five has been in statute since nineteen nineties. This is a hard cap for all school districts throughout the state. The only exception to that is a voter-approved levy override, which some districts in the metro have, but Omaha Public Schools has not historically. The Certified Budget Authority regulates the growth of expenditures year-to-year for all public school districts. This amount is calculated annually by the Nebraska Department of Education and currently limits that growth to two point five percent with some adjustments for growth in expenditures, state aid, and student population. New this year is LB two forty-three, which was passed by the Nebraska Legislature and signed into law by Governor Pillen. This establishes a cap of three percent annual growth on total school district revenues with some allowances for growth in student population overall and growth in student populations with limited English proficiency and poverty. The growth rate calculated by the Nebraska Department of Education for Omaha Public Schools was four point zero eight percent, including those student growth allowances. That resulted in a net increase of approximately thirty-one million dollars in our authorized property tax request, asking authority for the upcoming budget year. The proposed budget and property tax request for Omaha Public Schools for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four complies with all of these statutory requirements. This slide is a history of our property tax request and levy. The top half of the slide shows the tax request and levy for last year and this year being proposed, as well as a ten-year recap of our history at the bottom of the slide. Our total property tax request in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three was three hundred fifty-four point eight million dollars, which generated a levy of one dollar twenty-three point one cents based on Assessor certified valuations of twenty-eight point eight billion dollars. This year's property tax request is three hundred eighty-nine point five million dollars, which would generate a levy of one dollar twenty-one point seven cents based on the certified valuations from Douglas and Sarpy County Assessor of thirty-two billion dollars. As you can see from the table and chart on the bottom half of the slide, the levy for Omaha Public Schools has decreased five out of the last six years and six out of the last ten years. In the four years where there was a levy increase, that was due to the issuance of general obligation bonds authorized by the voters of Omaha Public School District in two thousand fourteen and two thousand eighteen. As property valuations have increased and have provided additional funding for those principal and interest payments, we have lowered them as we are able to, based on our obligations to the bondholders. This slide shows the combined expenses for the four funds that can have a property tax levy, as well as the source of all revenues for those four funds. The general fund is the largest fund for Omaha Public Schools. The proposed budget for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four is seven hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. A seventeen million dollar increase over the previous year, or two point three nine percent. The special building fund budget is proposed to be twenty-eight point six million dollars for maintenance, repairs, and renovation projects at our over one hundred buildings that the district operates. The fifty-four point three million dollar bond fund and five point four million dollar Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund levies are for principal and interest payments on bond obligations only. As you can see from the pie chart on the right, property taxes are our largest source of income, three hundred and eighty-five point seven million dollars. Forty-seven percent of the total revenue for those funds. State receipts are the second biggest category at three hundred and fifty-one point two million dollars, forty-three percent. Other local receipts are budgeted at fifty million dollars. Federal receipts for administration of federal grants is seven hundred thousand dollars. And the remaining budgetary revenues come from previously issued bond proceeds and cash reserves on hand. It's important to note that the amount of the property taxes presented on this slide is different from the previous slide. This slide does not include the one percent commission that goes to the Douglas and Sarpy County Treasurer for collecting property taxes totaling three point nine million dollars. In conclusion, the property tax request for Omaha Public Schools is three hundred eighty-nine million five hundred forty-six thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars. The total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed value by eleven point zero eight percent. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property, would be one dollar ten point eight three two six cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The Omaha Public Schools proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be one dollar twenty-one point seven zero two zero cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of Omaha Public Schools, including reimbursable grant funds, will exceed last year's budget by six point one eight percent. To obtain more information regarding the increase in the property tax request, citizens may contact me, Shane Ryan, Chief Financial Officer, Omaha Public Schools, at five three one two nine nine zero three zero six, or by email at shane.rhian@ops.org. We have more detailed budget information available on our website at ops.org under the About Us section, under Financial Information. And we also have a recording of the budget hearing that was previously held on September seventh, available for your review on YouTube. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Shane. All right, everybody, before we get to the public comment period, some of the building commission staff is gonna turn the podium around to face the dais. While they're doing that, I'll just go over a few things. So a reminder that this is being streamed live and broadcast, so please keep your comments, comments appropriate for all audiences here and at home. We're gonna go in order as far, I'll call names forward based on the sign-in sheet. So in the order of which people signed in, if you checked the box that said you wish to speak, then we're just gonna go in that order. So I'll call a name up, but then I'll also announce who's next in line. Everyone will get two minutes to speak. There's a timer. So when you get to the podium, just to the right of that computer screen is a timer. When you see the orange light come on or the yellow light come on, that means you have thirty seconds left. And I don't mean to be rude or harsh, but we gotta stick to the two minutes, because there's a lot of people that wanna speak. So once you get to the two minutes, I will call time. And if you keep going, I, I will cut you off and call the next person. Again, I don't mean to be rude, but there's a lot of people that wish to speak, so I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's time. If I pronounce anyone's name wrong, I apologize. Please correct me when you come to the mic. Even if I get your name correct, the statute requires that you provide your name when you begin speaking. The statute that governs this meeting also requires your address. However, it does provide a waiver to people to protect the security of the individual or the organization they represent. So if you're uncomfortable stating your address, you don't have to, just, just tell me that you don't prefer to give your address. But you do have to give your name, even if I pronounce it correctly when I call you forward. If you have any written remarks, there's Sandy over here, Sandy Conley, she's waving. If you have any written remarks that you wanted to submit, you can do so with her. There will not be a back and forth between you and the representatives up here or in the first rows. This is just an opportunity for you to give comments. And I believe I covered everything I wanted to, so we'll go ahead and get started. First individual that I'm calling forward is Alonzo Guilford, and Daniel Schaefer is next up. So Alonzo Guilford, please come forward.
We just ask you to speak clearly and slowly for our sign interpreters. Thank you. When you, when you give your name.
Alonzo Guilford.
Thank you.
I just wanted to come down to see what the meetings are about down here. And I wanted to tell you that I'm very impressed about the things you discussed down here. And another thing is that our property taxes jumped sky-high from last year. And I'm eighty-two years old, and I'm trying to hold on to my property values, but they keep going up and up and up, and I'm gonna have to move if it hits me too much more in the coming year, okay? But I do want to let you know, I'm proud to be able to come down here and talk to you about what I saw on the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Guilford. And did you wanna wave the address requirement then? You're waving your, the address requirement then?
No, I live at fifty-five fifteen North Fiftieth Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Dan. Daniel Schaefer, and then next up, Michael Luters.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Daniel Schaefer. I live at seventeen twenty-nine South Eighteenth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm disabled. I had bypass surgery and I have a defibrillator, so I can't work. And my prices are going up. Everything's going up, you know. The property taxes is really putting a strain on my budget, you know. I've been in my house for the last fourteen years, you know, and this value on the house, you know, went from ninety-one, ninety-one thousand four hundred dollars to ninety-six six hundred dollars. Boy, that's a big jump on my budget, you know. It's hard to pay, you know, for groceries and everything, because of the economy and stuff, you know. It's like, they gotta do something about this. It's going all the way back to Washington, you know, up, you know. The president ain't helping nobody out, if you ask me. You know, it's putting a big strain on everybody, you know. It's just, something has to be done. You know, I have pictures of my house here where I need to get work done on my house, and I can't get no help on it, you know. I tried this program, that program, and it's hard to get help. You know, my house ain't valued at that much, you know. I'm lucky to get, if I went to sell it, like, they're trying to get me, every time I get a thing in the mail where they wanna buy my house, I can't afford to go nowhere else. Who can nowadays? You know. But that's all I gotta say, you know. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Luters, and after that, Deborah Mitchell and Kenneth Wade.
Hi, my name is Mike Luters. I live in Elkhorn in a city that has yet to be annexed by the, by the city of Omaha. I'd like to waive my address, if I could. I just wanna say, I really appreciate the information that was given tonight. It was helpful. Douglas County, when you discussed the, the average increase being twelve percent, is that, was that accurate, twelve percent? This year, my personal increase was forty percent. A hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars on a, on a property that was valued at three hundred and twenty-nine K last year, four hundred and sixty-one K this year. I understand that with my children, I like them to be considered above average. When it comes to my taxes, I would rather it not be above average. So forty percent is, 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 to me, it's out of the question. It's not, it's not a reasonable increase. And especially in the context, as was expressed before me, that we're in a time of incredible inflation and other pressures on families. I think this is really unreasonable. I'm also speaking up for the entire neighborhood that I live in. Everyone in my neighborhood has had an equal or greater amount of increase. And again, give me twelve percent, I would be very, very happy. I understand the need for incremental increase. I don't understand one area taking a greater burden than others. That does not make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Mitchell and Kenneth Wade, and then next up would be Hassan Adiraman. And folks, just a heads up, I will, if, if you're getting close to the two minutes, I will announce when fifteen seconds are remaining on your time. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to everyone. I, I understand that taxes have to be raised, levied.
And I'm sorry, miss, I need you to state your name for the record.
My name is Deborah Mitchell. It's not Deborah. I live at five eight zero three Gerard Street in Omaha. I live in an area where a lot of people don't even know it's out there. We don't even have a city sewer line. We don't even have paved streets. And every time I look around, my taxes is getting raised. I bought a house for less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and now it's almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I look at the paperwork that y'all send me, and it makes me feel like you guys don't care if we lose our house and become homeless. Because every time we turn around, you're raising it without a very, very good reason. I'm paying now what some people would pay for a three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar home. I'm on a fixed income, my husband and I. We're on a fixed income. So what are we supposed to do when it gets to the place where, because you guys constantly feel you need to raise and increase taxes for this, that, and the other? What are we supposed to do? We put our life and our hope in our homes, but every time we turn around, it seems like somebody's always trying to take it away from us. And that's not fair. I was born and raised in Omaha Douglas County. Thank you, Jesus. I'm sixty-seven years old and loving it. But it's not fair, for every time I turn around, my taxes are being raised. It's already been raised once. And one issue on this card here is twice what my mortgage is.
Fifteen seconds.
So, I mean, think about us. Please don't just think about yourselves. We have to live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Was, did Kenneth Wade wanna speak before I?
I speak for him.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah. Apologize for the mispronounce of your name. Hassan Adiraman is next, followed by Ann Bushman. Is Hassan in the crowd? Okay, I'm gonna move on then. Hassan, if you happen to appear later, just please let Miss Conley know over here, who's waved her hand earlier. Ann Bushman, and then next will be John Riggleman.
Good evening. My name is Ann Bushman, and the property I'd like to discuss, the address is twenty-five twenty-four North Sixtieth Street. Last year's assessed value on this property was a hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars. This year's assessed value is one hundred fifty-nine thousand and three hundred dollars. That is a thirty-seven thousand dollar increase in one year. There's been no improvement to the house. I am also on a fixed income. I'm sixty-eight and a half years old. I have spent every penny that I saved for retirement on taxes to keep this house. And the house that I live in, which has also gone rocket high. But not thirty-seven thousand. But not $37,000 in one year. I don't understand that, and I don't accept it. There's nothing I can do about it, but I'm here to tell you, I can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Riggelman, and then after that, James Silverman.
John Riggelman, 3505 Hamilton Street. I've been here before. Property taxes keep going up. Over 50% the last two years. You're lucky it only went up 18,000 for you. Instead of complaining about the taxes, I got some, maybe some solutions. If I'm right, all these school districts are assessed property taxes on their buildings. Why? Why are public schools assess taxes on their property? You get assessed taxes, it goes up. Where do you go to get to pay for that? You come to us. Our property taxes go up. Who pays ours? Nobody else. So why, Douglas County, this is Douglas County, why do you assess property tax on public school buildings? Makes no sense. Other states, there's other states don't do that. There's no sense in that. If you don't have to pay the property tax on your property, then you don't need our Also, other states that I've seen on the, on property taxes, when you buy a house, say you buy a house for $100,000, and I, this will be my last comment if you just let me in there. You buy a house for $100,000, and you pay X amount of dollars in property taxes, and you stay in that house for 20 years. That's all you ever pay for is that $100,000. When you sell your house for $300,000, then it's worth $300,000, and you'll get the money for that.
15 seconds.
So, in closing, I think, I wish the governor was here. This is a perfect solution. On tax hikes, I've already, okay. Yeah, I have a couple of things with the state, and it looks like I'm gonna win, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, James Silverman, and then after that, I'll go back to Hassan Adiraman.
James Silverman, 15409 Armstrong. And I am here to, number one, thank you all for how hard you work to afford your jobs and to work your budgets and all the creativity that goes into it. For the gentlemen up there from Metropolitan Community College, if I only had an $18,000 increase, I would be home eating dinner. I bought this house when I had to move to Omaha because my children needed my help. I had to move to Omaha seven years ago. I bought a house for $175,000 that I didn't like. It's a celebrity home, it's a cookie-cutter home. And so, seven years ago, I paid $175,000. Today, you say it's worth $276,000. That's $100,000 in six-and-a-half years. It is, nothing else goes that way. I am making less money today, and I'm 72-years-old. I work full-time to afford to live. My expenses go up every day, no one is giving me a cost-of-living increase, no one is paying my house payment. They want $800 more in taxes for this coming year, according to this, than they got last year. And, and right at this moment, I'm totally frustrated, because I can't sell my house and move into anything even as nice as the one I don't like. And so, what, what am I gonna do? How am I supposed to live? And I'm still working every day, and I shouldn't be? My doctors ask me every time, "Why are you still working?" Guess why? So, you know, this, Nebraska's the tax-me state. I have to live within my budget on less income than I had seven years ago. Let the school, and my daughter's been teaching at OPS for 18 years. She has two degrees, and she is underpaid drastically. I buy school supplies for her to use in her classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Hassan Adiraman, and then after that, Kevin McGuire. Sir, did, were you down in the overflow room, sir? Okay, I apologize, I must have pronounced your name wrong, but you are next.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Basant Sapati. Proud to be Nebraskan, live in this state.
Are you waiving your address requirement?
No. I'm proud to be here. I live at 6224 South 100th Street. Wanted to say two things. I wanted to thank everyone here working so hard. I know you're working to help us, but I want you to see that we work just like you. We're in this neighborhood, in this city, we're doing everything we can to support our families. Two things I want to say, when I look at taxes in this county, I compare to taxes everywhere else, it is higher than average. We need to do better. I know you're working on it, but it has to be better. That's number one point I want to come across. The second part, let's work together. Come up with reasons that are important today. There are different type of people in this city, some maybe not as flexible as some others. Let's set priorities, and let's do the things we need today, and worry about things that can be tomorrow. And I totally agree with some of the priorities I see, I think they're all important. I wanted to just say the part that I think we need to work together, and see what's important in the near future, and hold back on something that is, that can wait. Our taxes are pretty high, compared to some of the other neighborhoods, some of the other states and counties. I want some help, and I'm willing to work with you and others to do that. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Kevin McGuire, followed by Betty Tanner. Is there a Kevin McGuire in the audience? All right, well, Kevin, if you happen to come in later, like I said, please talk to Sandy Conley over here in the corner. Betty Tanner.
My name is Betty Tanner, and I live at 4302 South 38th Street, South Omaha. I know nothing's gonna change tonight, I get that. I just wanted to point out that I've had this house for three years, 2021. The first year I had it, it went up $49,700 in evaluation, and this year it went up $26,000. I think that's even higher than the percentage. I haven't, didn't do the percentages, I should have. Nothing has changed at my house, nothing has changed in my neighborhood, just a little old South Omaha neighborhood, but I'm hearing my neighbors say the same things I am. We're, I'm 62, I will never get to retire, I will always have to work because I have to pay these taxes constantly. Not just these taxes, but taxes on things that we purchase. Everybody forgets about that. Where I work, we don't get constant raises nor cost-of-living raises. I have, work for a small company, just trying to survive. Every day it's a chore, just getting up to go to work. I want to retire, I'm 62, I'm tired, but it's not gonna happen. I would like to see why I was turned, I was ignored for my taxes in June. I submitted for a decrease, no response, no decrease, no increase, I mean, well, I did get an increase, but no notification on my stuff that I submitted via mail. So, something was lost somewhere. And I'm just asking for a little bit of help so that we can all live the American dream and own our homes and keep our homes. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Next up is Marv, I believe it's Marv Cooner.
My name is Marvin Coon, I live at 3606 North 114th Avenue. And before I get started on the increase of taxes, they increased my taxes by 54%. I protested. Now my taxes are only increased by 43%. Okay, what I have to say is, everybody that has a political office gives me one thing. I didn't raise your mill levy. Ladies and gentlemen, you don't have to raise a mill levy when you raised my evaluation by 43%. The neighborhood I live in, it was the last house that was built there. I built it myself 30 years ago. The homes that are there range from 1948 to 1992. I'm 76-years-old, and I would say most of the people in this audience is probably over 65, or a good number of them. We don't have jobs that work for the state or city where they're gonna give us 10%, 15% raises. We're living on Social Security, and with a little bit of money that we have saved up, there is no question at all in my mind that the legal people here do not take in consideration the senior citizens that live in this city or state. Now, other states, they have a plan where if you're a senior citizen, you'll be paying less. We have nothing here, and we have no way of getting any extra income to offset the increased costs in our cost of living.
15 seconds.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Vicky Parks, followed by Tim Briales.
My name is Vicky Parks, legal name Victoria Parks. I live in North Omaha, I will not give my address since I live alone. However, I wanted to say that my sentiments are the reflection of many in my neighborhood. Taxpayers feel helpless that people, our leaders, continue to raise our taxes without explanations as to why our taxes are going up. I don't see any tax services improve in my neighborhood, so I don't understand why my taxes are still going up. My assessment went up almost $60,000 in one year. That's shameful. I'm retired, I don't have a job increase of salary every year like the people we're paying taxes for. And I think that it is just shameful that those of us who, I've lived in my house 47 years, and to get to the point to where I gotta make sure every year I have enough money put aside to pay taxes, means I gotta cut someplace else. And let me tell you, folks, I don't know what's going on in your neighborhood, but in my neighborhood, when you raise our taxes, our insurance rates go up. I don't care what the mayor says, my utilities are going up. To make improvements on my house, to make it worth the value that you're assessing, has gone up. And you're, I tell my kids every day, I can't afford to move from my house to the poor house, but you're sending me there with no explanations, no justifications as to why you're raising our taxes in these poor rundown neighborhoods in North Omaha. It's shameful.
Tim Briales, and then Alan Kozel.
Tim Briales, I live in Walnut Ranches up north. The information that you guys gave tonight was, was good. You guys are running a business. We are all running a business, it's called Our Families. I haven't had a raise since 2019. My propane bills doubled, gasoline's doubled, food, and we went to grocery store the other day, a hundred and some bucks, carried out a couple bags, we didn't even take any meat, you know? So, in our neighborhood, an average of 57%. My house alone went up 89%. Anybody wants to write me a check, any of you guys want to write me a check for what my house is valued at, I'll pick up the check, I'll be out by the weekend. It's ridiculous. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough that I send my kids to private school, I've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to OPS, never used one dime of OPS money. I get no help sending my kids to a private school, that's my decision, my wife and I sacrificed for that. But I've given OPS hundreds of thousands of dollars in the 31 years I've lived in Omaha, and have never taken one penny of that. There's 39 extra billion dollars of assessed property value, and, you know, where's our, some of our credit from it? This is just big, too big of a swing at one time. I'm digging into my savings, like I said, I haven't had a raise since 2019, and, you know, I'm digging into my savings to make ends meet right now, and I don't know, you know, how long that can last, but prices are going up. I have nobody to go to, you know, take food out of my kid's mouth. I mean, that's the only option I have. You guys just raise our taxes, make us pay for it. I got nobody to go to, to get more money to pay my bills.
Time.
We all are running a business, and it's called Our Families. I just want to get that in your guys' head. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Kozel, and then Matt Johnson. Alan, maybe Alan Kozel, is that, is there Alan in the? All right, we're gonna move on to Matt Johnson.
I'm Matt Johnson, Matthew Johnson, and I'd like to waive my address if that's all right. Thank you all for allowing time for public comment today. I understand that my input will probably have little, little no effect on the proposed tax hikes, but I hope that what I say will be benefit, be a benefit to the members of the public listening, so these words are for them. You're not alone. You're not the only one sick of paying more every year. Look around. You're not the only one struggling to make ends meet while paying rent on a house you already own, and getting a postcard in the mail every year demanding you pay more. It's an interesting choice of word, a property tax request? Can we say no? It's not a request. So, you're not the only ones tired of paying out of pocket. If you want to choose a school for your children, other than the one assigned to you by the government, based on your address. So, let's let this tax hike be a wake-up call to start working for positive change. Register to vote, and support candidates who advocate for change. Next year, vote for opportunity scholarships, so poor children can attend a school of their choice rather than the government's. Best of all, if you get the chance, sign the Epic Option, and end the morally repugnant concept of a property tax in the state once and for all. Speak up, get organized. There are decent people in the state on both sides who want to work with you to change the system. Let's start today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Roger Boozy, followed by Stephen Bott. Is there a Roger Boozy in the crowd? All right, Stephen Bott or Stephen Boit? Okay. Then after that, I have Art Porcello.
Hello, my name is Steve Voat. I live at 11925 Skylark Drive in Omaha, Nebraska. I just want to give a little background. My grandparents built this house in 1962 for about $28,500. Back in 2018, when I took the house over after both of my grandparents passed away, the house was valued at approximately $180,000. The city then did that whole widespread western part of the city monster increase, jumped at about $20,000 at that time, and since then, the city has raised it $82,000. Home's had no improvements, other than a finished basement, like roof put on the top of the ceiling probably in 1962, and sprinkler system outside. And I understand that we're not really here to talk about the taxes itself, but my concern is equal taxation of homes. There's a home that is in St. Andrews Point. The parcel number is 214-174-5063. I'm sure a lot of you board members know who that is. This person's home was originally done in 2018 at 457,500, yeah, $457,000. 2021, it was increased to $520,000. There is no increase on this home. It is by a golf course. It is by a golf course in South One Hundred and Twentieth. If it was equally applied like mine was at sixteen percent, it should be six hundred and two thousand dollars today. There's also another home over by Burke, if anybody has kids there or drives by there. House has been under renovation for the last two year, or four years, I'm sorry. My home alone is only about fifteen hundred square feet. This is fifty, or five thousand seventy-one feet, and is only being taxed at two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. I think it's time for equal taxation of people. That way, we can lower our tax rates for everybody.
Thank you. Art Porcello, followed by Amy Willenbring.
Yeah, my name is Art Porcello. I live at sixty-three, sixty-three Grover Street. I live in a fifty-year-old trailer. My taxes went up over a hundred percent. I work for the city. I got a two percent raise. I don't live in a hundred thousand dollar home. I'm sorry that you guys paid eighteen thousand more dollars, but really, a fifty-year-old trailer does not hold value. And if I sell it, the buyer has to move it. They cannot leave it sit on that lot. It's ridiculous. It, there's no justification for it. I went online three times, tried to get in there to challenge the valuation, and I could not do it. So, now I'm stuck with paying it this year. Next year, I'll try to challenge it. No, I'm not paying eighteen thousand dollars for taxes, but it's still not justified to pay over an increase of over a hundred percent. I don't know how to challenge this. I don't know where the justification in this is.
Thank you. Amy Willenbring, followed by Todd Willenbring. Amy or Todd Willenbring? Okay. I'll move on to Pat Schaefer. I apologize, Pat Schneider. Now, it's, now that I look at it better, I apologize, Pat.
My name is Pat Schneider. I'll waive my address here. I've lived in my house for thirty-one years. I am in my seventies. I'm retired, I guess you'd say, on, on social security. And I am disabled, although I don't look it. And, and I, I've had my increase of my property, fifty thousand dollars each year for the last three years. Fifty thousand dollars each year for the, and I have social security, okay? And we know, we all know who the real culprit is here, but I'd like to point out one other thing. In twenty-seventeen, the Douglas County pulled a fast one on us. They took our land values and they increased them four hundred percent. They dropped our house values down to match that, and then they've been jacking them up ever since. My house, I, you know, I was, I actually am on a homestead exemption, yet I've paid taxes for the last three years. Think of that. Because my, my salary is below the, the limit, and is considerably below the limit. We all know who the culprit is here, and that is the Omaha Public School System. Now, I'd like to point out something. I went to the, I went to the school board back in nineteen ninety-three. I haven't been there since. But in nineteen ninety-three, I want to point out a couple of statistics I gave that day. In nineteen sixty-eight, there were sixty-eight thousand students in the Omaha Public School System being administered by seventeen administrators out of a couple rooms in Jocelyn Castle just about a half a block north off of Dodge. When I went in to give this presentation, some twenty years later, they had closed Technical High School over on Thirtieth and Cummings. They had over two thousand administrators administering twenty-four thousand less students. Thank you.
Thank you. Marla Nguyen, followed by Karen Wheatz, it looks like, but Marla Nguyen? Is there a Carla Wheatz? All right. And, by the way, anyone's name who, you know, you don't catch it till later if you're in the outside, just like I said, please let me know and I'll get you back on. Joseph Cass. Okay, thank you. And Kristy Rykowsky is next.
Hi, I'm Joseph Cass. I live at one-four-four-three-zero Nelson's Creek. I'm seventy years old, still working forty hours a week. I've been working since I was a teenager. I put money away, I paid for my house. I'm thinking, oh, do I need to get a new mortgage to start paying my taxes and stuff? And, and we know OPS goes through a lot of money, and as has been pointed out by others, a lot of it has to do with administrative costs, but one thing I was wondering about is the quality education that we're paying for. I'm a retired engineer with all kinds of knowledge about physics and math and everything else like that. And I was wondering, this is just an out-of-the-box kind of idea here, is old people make good teachers inherently, and I, I'm working for Metropolitan Community College right now, full-time on the lab staff and help out there, but could OPS possibly have a program where they recruit knowledgeable older people to help augment the school staffs, and especially in the science and math part of the world? Because, you know, they used to be, they couldn't afford to pay somebody like me to teach stuff, but now that I'm retired, I'd be willing to help out the school system if there was such a program that would allow, you know, us older, I already got a good guy letter. I used to drive a school bus after I stopped working as an engineer. Just a new idea to help maybe cut down the cost of the school system because that's where a lot of this money is going to. Thank you very much, and I like the way this thing is working.
Thank you. Kristy Rykowsky, followed by Carol Zajek. Okay, Carol Zajek?
Hello, my name's Carol Zajek. I am waiving my address. My property taxes have increased every single year since the year two thousand, so when Jean Stothart says that it's gone down since she came in in two thousand thirteen, I don't know how. When my taxes, when my property tax increase happened this year, which I protested, it went from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and with an increase of seventy-two percent. I did protest it, and it went to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. However, I never made a single upgrade or improvement to my property, nor had there been any significant property enhancements in my neighborhood. When the gentleman who is speaking about the schools, that if it's a dollar twenty-one on every hundred dollars, that doesn't sound like a lot of money, but for my valuation, that's two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars that I have to pay off of my property taxes, and I don't see why I should have to pay that big of a chunk when I'm a single person who does not have children anyway. The wheel tax never went away, and like it was supposed to. The entertainment tax is still in place. I drive over potholes every day, and they're even worse in the North Omaha residential areas. Lincoln, Nebraska, has four pothole repair trucks while Omaha is considering buying one. I can't afford the current property tax hike as it is, and if I wanted to take a class at Metro, I'll pay the tuition, so why do I have to have a tax increase that goes to Metro? I don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Deanna Kate, followed by Jeremy Hertz.
Hi, it's Deanna Kateo, and I waive my address, although I'm her neighbor. My concerns are that the properties in our neighborhood are being assessed well over the amount. We have a ton of senior citizens in our neighborhood. We all have homes that are older, meaning plaster, knob and tube wiring. I just walked, came home today, and my stairs are coming off the support, and I'm trying to figure out how to pay for that. I don't mind paying taxes, but not to the excess that it does not equate to what my home is valued at. If I'm gonna pay taxes, I want to pay to see my roads in my neighborhood done. I want wires ground in the ground so that every time the power goes out, I'm not without power. The potholes, as my neighbor has said, the same thing. I'm wondering, I am here almost thirty years from Chicago, Illinois. They don't have to pay for sidewalks. I have to pay for people who continue to tear up my sidewalks. Why do I have to pay for that? I don't know that. I also want to know, why am I paying for Metro Community College? I've never gone to grade school here, high school, nor college here. As she said, if I wanted to take a course at Metro, I would pay for it myself. It would be cheaper than putting it on my taxes. I, I just don't understand how come it's so expensive to live here. It's a small town, I understand that, but there are people who have limited resources. I'm trying to retire. I'm sixty years old. I want to retire, but I'm scared to retire because I have a set budget, and already, it's out the door. You know? Can I retire? I've been working since I've been a teenager, but I'm in a position where I don't know that I can because costs, food, cars, gas, property taxes, this whole thing with the, like she said, the entertainment, that hasn't gone away, you know? When does it end? Can I opt out of not paying for other people's kids? I never had a kid, and I never went to school here. There's, that should be an option to opt out of paying if you've never gone to school here.
Thank you. Jeremy Hints or Jeremy Hertz? Thank you. And next up is Jeff Heinrich.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Hints. I'm at six-twenty-one Martha Street. I guess, coming here tonight, I appreciate the information, but frankly, I just feel ashamed of how far we've come with this, you know, just being overrun with these taxes and burdens. I just see all these hardworking people, and it just, it just makes me sick to my stomach that, that we've allowed this to happen. Our education system, I agree with the guy a couple before me, you know, the OPS, the whole school system, what our kids are learning nowadays is just, it's pathetic, it really is. You know, we're learning stuff that, you know, we've hardly made any upgrades in the educational system at all. We're still, you know, basically learning what we did, you know, forty, fifty years ago. Just basic stuff, just to get by. And it's just, it's sad. Our, our students are coming out of school systems and, and not learning a thing that really gets them ready for the world that we live in now. It's, it's really sad. I actually retired, I was in corrections in Douglas County, just got out of it last September. I was in for a few years. And that is one of the most money-making, or, you know, institutions that I've seen. It is so sad about how much money is sucked up by overtime in that, in that institution. It just made me sick how that thing is ran. I can't even believe the burden that it is on this community. The problems that were within, with bringing in, you know, just, you know, just minor felonies and stuff like that, based off of just drugs. You know, we load up our system, and, you know, we require all this overtime for all these officers. And it is just, it is completely, completely like out of control. But, you know, my taxes too. I mean, property is a thing. I don't have maintenance on my streets, I don't have anything like that. I haven't had potholes filled in three years. But, you know, my value went up a hundred and fifty thousand nearly in five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Heinrich, and then Daniel Waite.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Heinrich, seven-five-zero-eight North One Hundred Sixth Avenue. Company, no, but I am elected official, I'm a trustee for my SID. Let's go read some numbers to you. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget of seven-hundred-and-ten million dollars. Students, fifty-two thousand. That's thirteen thousand five hundred dollars per student from K to twelve. And I was gonna roast them, but now I'm ashamed because our good neighbors over in Bennington, are one-fourth as educated as our students because everybody knows that more money is better education. Two, Mayor Stothart. Apologies, hope she feels better soon. She confirms that our law enforcement is woefully understaffed, but yet uses her executive authority to curtail our Second Amendment rights. Who does she think she is, the governor of New Mexico? We'd have lower taxes, better services if you politicians would get control of OPS. The malfeasance and mismanagement is palpable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Daniel Waite, followed by Tommy Luong.
My name is Daniel Waite. I'll waive my address. You'll have to excuse me, I had some esophagus surgery, so I have difficulty talking without coughing. I guess there's a few things I'm concerned with, and one is that when I got my property tax bill, I wanted to try to be a rational person, so I went online, did a little research. And depending on which data set you look at, Nebraska has the seventh highest real estate taxes in the entire country out of fifty-six. The others, the worst-case scenario from some of the data sets says we're the fifth highest. So, I would drill down a little bit further, and I went to look. Well, I thought, well, who's sixth? If we're seventh, in the best-case scenario, who's sixth? So, I looked at that. I come to find out that the sixth state has no state income tax. Their property taxes are higher than ours because they don't have state income tax, whereas Nebraska has a six-point-two percent in contracts if you have meaningful earnings. So, you look at that, then I looked at the sales tax. The sales tax rates were typically lower in these states. And in Nebraska, we're at seven percent, plus nine-and-a-half percent if you're gonna eat out at a restaurant. We also have some of the highest motor vehicle taxes. We also have a number of ancillary add-on taxes. When you add all this up, it becomes very meaningful. And here's the biggest thing. These states, other states that I looked at, four of them have homestead exemptions that are actually meaningful for people that are over sixty-two or are on fixed incomes. The people getting hurt the worst on this are the people that are on fixed incomes and have a low income. Yet Nebraska has no exemption, and there, if you have, again, any meaningful earnings, for a homestead exemption. In addition, I'm not seeing anywhere where people are saying, you know, maybe we should kick some of these projects and pipe dreams we have to the curb because we do have a problem here with our budgeting. And secondly, and secondly, maybe we should put some projects off because right now, your interest rates are going up, and your bonds are gonna cost you a lot more money going down the road.
Next up is Tommy Luong, then followed by Connie Sherbrown-Bitzes.
Hi, my name's Tommy Luong. I'd like to waive my address. I'm a father of two children, supporting them on one income, fixed budget. A major increase in property tax last year caused a strain on my finances. This round of property tax would put me in a position where I could no longer afford the mortgage. We have lived in this house now for five years and have called it a home. Having to sell it and uproot our lives would be devastating. Finding a new home at an affordable price in a decent neighborhood would be a great feat. I want to bring up just one example where I feel that Omaha Public School Funds are being handled inappropriately. My son is in the sixth grade, and he attends an OPS middle school. His school is handing out brand-new iPads to everyone this year when I see that the one that had, that they handed him two years ago is still in great shape. So, I ask, how would it be possible for your typical Nebraska taxpaying citizen to know if the wisest choice is made with tax dollars collected? I think I speak on behalf of most, if not all, Douglas County residents who have received a green property tax increase proposal card last year and this year, that with all due respect, we are simply tired of writing a blank check.
Thank you. Next up, Connie Sherbrown-Bitzes, followed by Tim Schulte.
My name is Connie Bitzes. I would like to waive my address. I'm here this evening as a homeowner in Hillsborough. I am also a board member and vice president of the Hillsborough Association of Landowners, which consists of one thousand one hundred and forty-seven homes and the largest subdivision in the state of Nebraska. I am here to voice my opposition and the concerns of many homeowners in Hillsborough that we are already being taxed for increased property that we are already being taxed for increased property valuations on our homes. And then being taxed again for the political subdivision whose intent is to increase its property tax request by more than the allowable growth percentage. Like all of us individual taxpayers, the taxing entities must learn to tighten their belts. Two, rather than asking for more money from taxpayers who are stressed and strapped already and only trying to survive in the current economy. Like the rest of us, budget costs for the political divisions, and this is the key to staying within the allowable growth percentages to re- to relieve property taxes. Thank you for your consideration in asking the political subdivision to stay within their allowable growth percentage without placing additional burner, burdens on homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tim Schulte, followed by Tom Koki.
My name's Tim Schulte. I'll wave the address. Um, I've heard the same story a lot of times over and over tonight. Um, I myself have tried to fight my evaluation in the past. I felt like I was talking to a brick wall uh, through both, um, instances of doing that. And I think that's something that definitely needs to change. Um, as far as our taxes, sixty-one percent of those property taxes go to the schools. Um, I'm a product of many schools throughout the Omaha area, went to private school, uh, public school for high school OPS, been through trade school, Metro, UNO, and finished at UNL with an engineering degree. So I've been through quite a few of them. But over the last three years, I've grown a lot of distrust in our school system. I've seen what my nephews and nieces have been put through, and it's not something that I want for my kids. Uh, from the Bennington presentation, it looks to me like the cost of, uh, educating a student is around the fourteen thousand dollars a year range. But their expenditures divided by their almost forty-two-hundred students would suggest over twenty thousand dollars per student. So I'm questioning the numbers there. In either case, I think I can do it cheaper. I've got a two-and-a-half-month-old son at home, and I think I can do it cheaper. Maybe I'm naive for that, but that's my plan. Whether I choose to do that with a private school or homeschool, I'd ask you guys all to consider a waiver system so that at least I can get some of my funding back to educate my child on my own.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Koki, followed by Tracy Conig. Tom, it looks like K-O-K-Y, or Tom Col- maybe it's K-O-L-E-Y, Tom Co- is there a Tom Coley? Okay, um, Tracy Conig.
Hello, my name's Tracy Conig. I live at thirty-two oh four Cass. And, uh, I live on a fixed income. There's a lot of people here. And what I, I've lived in my house for forty-seven years. And taxes back then were all right, but now it, it went up thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-four cents, which I can't barely afford that. Um, I had to take out a loan to get my house fixed. It was the first house built on that street in eighteen ninety. And, uh, now, we used to be able to fix our own homes. Now we can't. We have to have somebody else with, um, a permit to do it, or a licensed person to do it. And we can't, I barely can afford that. Um, my, I had leaks in my roof in the kitchen, in the living room. Uh, we had a fire. Uh, I had to have siding. Somebody called me in because it wasn't sited. So I had to take out a loan on that. And it's, it's really breaking my bank. But why do you have to have a streetcar? Why? Are, are, we have bicycles. We have the scooters. We have, and back when I was little, we used to have license plates on our bicycles. Well, you're using money to paint the, the streets for the bi- for the bikes. Start taxing the bicyclists. They don't go as fast as we do. I mean, why get a streetcar when you guys, when we can't even afford it?
All right, that's time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Lisa Dent, followed by Tom Newverth.
My name's Lisa Dent. I'd like to wave my address. Uh, let me start by saying I'm not from Nebraska. This is actually the seventh state in which I've lived. Uh, two states in the mid-Atlantic, two states in New England, one state in the deep south, and Illinois prior to Nebraska. We've been here for six years, brought both of our daughters here, and recently moved my parents to Nebraska. I'm tired of moving. Um, that said, uh, I've always been one to kind of look for justification as we've paid high property taxes everywhere we've lived, minus the one state in the deep south. Most of those states, we've been, uh, within ten minutes of the coast. And that in itself was huge justification for the high property tax. That said, there also were other exceptions within the tax rate, which is either no state income tax, no state sales tax, uh, no, uh, sales tax on food and/or clothing, um, which all made a huge difference. Illinois was the one state that didn't have that, and as such, was the shortest amount of stay that we had, which was only eleven months because we felt as if we were bleeding. Um, I think I've heard before, a lot of people are looking for the services for which we're paying. I've wondered why Elkhorn, um, basically went into Omaha when we, within our subdivision, have to pay for the maintenance of our own roads. Um, I'm glad to hear that the city is going to
Fifteen seconds.
Be, uh, supplying additional funds for the police force. But at the same time, it breaks my heart to hear that we have so many people on limited income that are having to face the struggle of actually having to sell their homes.
Time. Thank you very much. Tom Newverth, followed by Lauren Clayton.
Hello, I'm Tom Newverth, County Road Thirty-four, Blair, Nebraska. Um, I've kind of impressed with everybody being here and all their comments, being able to stand up here and talk 'cause I'm pretty freaking nervous right now. But Randy, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to pick on you tonight. Um, first I'll compliment you. I didn't fact-check you, but if you raised two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to put up that trade school, God bless you. Now, the part I love about that is because those people have the choice to give you the money. Most people in this room don't have that choice. You're taking our money whether we want you to or not. And I would say that, you know, the value of a product is based on what somebody's gonna pay for it. So if a Corvette's worth ninety thousand dollars, or a Big Mac is worth six bucks, I guess that's what somebody's willing to pay for it. And if your education is so fantastic and, and your facilities are, I've seen them, then why don't you build a budget based on what those students value that education at? Why don't you, instead of worrying about increases and, and what paper costs and what weld wire costs or what basket weaving supplies cost, why don't you just build it on what the revenue you have coming in and cap it right there? And based on your comments, if you did that, you'd have twenty percent more money this year because you've got twenty percent more students. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Clayton, followed by Joy Stock Schulte.
My name's Lauren Clayton and I wave my address. Um, property tax evaluation this year went up a hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. It's forty-three percent, or forty-three point forty-eight percent. And, um, the house was built in nineteen sixty-four. Two-thirds of it's got crawl spaces, dirt crawl spaces. And, uh, yet the state of Nebraska said, hey, everybody that's west of Seventy-Second Street, you gotta raise the property taxes. And that's discrimination in itself. And then, uh, this is my sixth year on social security. My wife's eight, so we're on fixed income. Um, I encouraged our neighbors and friends to come down here tonight, and they said, forget it, it's a waste of time because they're not, they don't care about us as individuals. And so, um, I was talking to my brother-in-law who lives in, in Indianapolis area. And for his profession, he had to move around the United States to different states. He used to call Massachusetts Taxachusetts. And then I told him what we were paying, and he said, oh my God, you gotta be kidding me. And so he says, why don't you move? Well, the only reason I'm staying is because my wife wants to live here. I thought I had to return the favor after she had to live where I had to live because of my profession for sixteen years. And, um, uh, my former life, I, twenty-three years ago, I had to do budgets for twenty-two years, so I empathize with you on that. I truly do, but, uh, just because of the increase of, of, uh, property valuation and then budget increases on your account, it's really gonna skyrocket for us. And, uh, I've heard somebody else refer to the wheel tax here. And, uh, I'm originally from Des Moines, Iowa.
Fifteen seconds.
And, um, the wheel tax is, is bass ackwards here. Wheel tax is to tax people who live outside the, uh, city, tax them for the infrastructure while they work here.
Time, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Joy Stock Schulte, followed by Eric Lanspa.
Hello, my name is Joy Stock Schulte at seven four twenty North Eighty-seventh Street. Um, I went to Harrison Elementary School, uh, RMR's Elementary School, Omaha North High School, OPS, all of it. Um, if it wasn't for Metropolitan Community College, I would be woefully undereducated. Um, the education is garbage, absolute trash. Um, it's ridiculous. My brother, who's eleven years younger than myself, um, let's see, he, we opted to homeschool him uh, because it was just a better option. Uh, out of sixty thousand students, I got this from OPS, out of sixty thousand students, uh, ten thousand opted out, that's seventeen percent. Um, as a hairdresser in this community for the last ten years, I have heard people fleeing OPS, going to Elkhorn, Bellevue, private schools, homeschooling. It is a travesty. And this isn't old news. I don't have a single gray hair on my head. All right? It's, it, I doubt it's gotten better. I have friends my age who teach at OPS and they're, they can barely pay their rent. Um, we can all agree, my husband and I are lucky enough to own our home. Um, we don't have any kids. I don't think we can afford to. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Lanspa, followed by Chris Chocolade.
Hi, Eric Lanspa. I prefer to not give my address. Uh, I moved here six-and-a-half years ago from South Dakota. I was not emotionally prepared for the taxes waiting for me in Nebraska. It's crazy, absolutely crazy. The, the challenge I have, you know, each of us lives on a budget of sorts. For some, it's very high, others is much less. Each of you pays taxes. We all pay taxes. The question or challenge I have is, in your own personal finances, personal lives, when you're raising your kids, if they want something that simply is unattainable for financial reasons and you're being fiscally irresponsible for providing it, you don't do it. The question is, how do you expect us to finance projects, schools, whatever it might be, that are just not affordable? Everybody must prioritize at the end of the month. Again, for some, it's much higher, for others, it's much lower. Everyone must live on a budget. Why can government entities not work within a budget and not have? I don't have the privilege of going to someone else and saying, hey, I wanna buy a new boat. Can you give me fifty grand? You have that privilege of coming to us and saying, we wanna build a new football field. We want this, we want that. Give us the money. We don't have that privilege. You don't have that privilege in your personal lives. I would assume not. So why do you expect us to do the same? That's all I have.
Thank you. Chris Chocolade, followed by Kevin Peterson.
Hi, I'm Chris Chocolade. I'd like to wave my address. Um, so I moved to Omaha and I was trying to figure out, uh, why some people are seeing three-hundred percent increases in their values and others weren't. So I started pulling around, pulling in some of the databases up in Nebraska.gov. And it looks like since twenty-twelve, uh, residential property, uh, levies increased seventy-seven percent. And then, uh, I was trying to figure out, it didn't match the, the percentages I'm seeing out of the organizations. And we dig into a little bit deeper, see that commercial properties are, are decreasing. So the amount of uh, taxes, commercial properties are paying, um, in Douglas County in particular, have decreased since twenty-twelve. And so that small decrease in commercial properties is being applied over to residential property owners. And, and when you dig into it a little bit more, you find out there's over three hundred tax districts, special tax districts, tax increment finance districts. And so what seems to be going on is that there's some tax districts that are not, when you're in a tax district, the base level never gets taxed anymore, right? Doesn't have inflation applied. So every time there's an eight percent increase from a school district, the eight percent increase is getting applied to a smaller and smaller number of people, like the denominator's getting smaller and smaller. And so what's happening is inflation is getting applied to a smaller group of people here in Omaha. And so you're seeing a seventy-seven percent increase in residential tax levy over that ten-year period. And so it's, so some of the averages you, you have out there look okay. And then, like, my granddad used to talk about, if you have one foot in the oven, you put one foot in the freezer. I mean, overall, you're at room temperature, but you're really uncomfortable, right? And that's kind of what we got going on. You have tax districts that are having zero percent interest.
Fifteen seconds.
Including the streetcar. That, the streetcar's a massive tax district that will have zero percent interest applied over a fifty-year period, and that's gonna have a huge increase in terms of degradation of services and a huge increase on taxes.
Time.
Thank you.
Kevin Peterson, followed by Deborah Alston.
I'm Kevin Peterson. I'll wave my address. And like a lot of people in here, I think I'm getting priced out of my home. I'm seventy-two, fixed income. My property taxes have gone up more than fifty percent in the past two years. And though I fear I'm getting priced out of my home, I also fear none of you people care. Because someone else will buy the house and they'll pay the tax. I listened to the property, uh, their political subdivisions, the speakers tonight. I didn't hear a single one talk about what are they doing with my money, with our money? What are they doing with our money to identify waste? What are they doing to eliminate inefficiencies? Nothing? I didn't hear a word towards that. I do agree, OPS, definitely the elephant in the room. I don't like your word tricks when you say we lowered the levy. Doesn't mean you took less money. And we're not fooled by that. The real reason I came down here tonight, sentence on this card says some of these political subdivisions are asking for more money than they're authorized. Any of you elected? Nod your heads if you are. Who do you work for? Read the room and say no to any extra money. To OPS, you people, you're just a black hole sucks in the money with no accountability. Give us school choice.
Deborah Alston, followed by Gabriel Villagomez.
Hi, I'm Deborah Alston.
Hi, I'm Deborah Alston. I live at fifteen forty-one Willis Avenue. Just like everybody else in this room, y'all have got to stop taxing us on so many things. Where I live, we live in a food desert. I've been in my house for over twenty years. There has not been a grocery store that I would go to to buy a can of fruit from. This is ridiculous. You put money into a streetcar, put us a grocery store in, fix our streets. This CSO project, had money for it. What happened? Now it's showing up on my gas bill, which makes my gas bill go higher. So now I got to pay more for taxes on property that I can't even get to half the time because my street is tore up. This is ridiculous. And I know by looking at your faces, y'all really don't care. Because if you did, we wouldn't be standing here or sitting here and listening to this crap tonight. Y'all would have told them no to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel Villagomez, followed by Eric Van Hunneck. Gabriel, sorry.
Yes, Gabriel Villagomez, six zero five four South Thirty-Sixth Street. I live in South Omaha. First off, OPS, yeah, I personally know teachers that work in OPS and they're telling me not to send my kids to OPS. They want them to go to private schools because they're saying that you're not preparing students for the next level, period. Secondly, you don't care. And it's been addressed several times. I understand that because you're thinking in your head, oh, you guys can dispute this. Yeah, last year went up fifty thousand, this year went up another fifty thousand for my property as far as the value goes. Sorry, I couldn't dispute it last year. I was going through cancer treatment, but whatever, you guys don't care. But that's the whole point. The point is that it's the values that are going up, but it's due to the house flippers. You guys get those letters in the mail, the guys flipping houses. So they come into a neighborhood like mine, they fix up a house with thirty grand, sell it for double, and then our values all go up based on the assessor's value based on that. So those guys are the second main problem. And then third off, the assessor's office is not compensating for this. And that's bull, to be honest. The assessor should compensate for that and know that us who want to stay in our homes aren't jacking up the values. It's these flippers that are doing it. But if you guys aren't compensating for that, then where's the solution? The solution is, we need to replace the assessor, period. When you go to vote in the polls, change all these people's bosses because these are mostly second in commands. Let's vote them all out. Let's get all new people in there. Heck, I'll run for assessor if you want. I'll blow everybody's property taxes back to base.
Thank you. Eric Van Hunneck, followed by Amanda Dagel.
Thank you. Please bear with me, I have a stutter. My name's Eric Van Hunneck. I live at eighty-one fifty-four Willett Street. I heard one of you say that you needed money because you had an incredible increase of twenty-point-nine-eight percent property increase. And you said it like you couldn't believe it. That's exactly how much our house went up, from one hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred and eleven thousand. And yet you don't believe us. I don't understand that. We are priced out of our home now. We don't have a choice. I'm a disabled veteran. I, I can't work full-time. I can't even work at a McDonald's. If I did, I'd find myself two blocks away and have no idea how I got there. I'm not even going to remember half of this meeting. I hope I forget all your crap and remember everyone else's. So I'm at ninety percent disability, so I'm not at a hundred percent where I can get help from the state and yet I'm not, I'm more than what I need to be able to work full-time. I am blessed to have a part-time job where I'm able to work four hours. But it takes me all day to do it. I started work at nine o'clock this morning and I still have work to do when I get home tonight. You guys say that you want more money because your valuations have gone up? Join the club. Do what the rest of us deal with. Suck it up. And you don't like that? You can go screw yourselves.
All right. Amanda Dagel, followed by Aaron Moulton.
Good evening, it's Amanda Dag and I prefer not to give my address. Nebraska's motto is welcome to the good life. I say it should be welcome to the tax life. I'm upset at your request to increase my property taxes above and beyond, and I'm very much opposed. With all due respect, Mayor Gene Stothard, public safety is not a concern for Omaha. And as you mentioned earlier tonight, here are some reasons why. In September twenty-two, our house and vehicles were vandalized. OPD came out, looked at our video surveillance and said, looked like you pissed someone off. No one ever called or followed up. On August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, someone tried to steal our car twice. Nine-one-one called, no officers sent out. A police report was taken over the phone with my seventeen-year-old, mind you, not even the owner of the vehicle. Do you think anybody ever followed up? No. City Councilwoman Amy Melton was emailed. No email was ever received from her. Shame on you, City of Omaha and Douglas County. On September seventh, last Sunday, someone sideswiped my daughter. She called nine-one-one. They said, exchange info. An OPD officer just happened to be passing by, stopped. The driver of the other vehicle had no license, the registration and insurance from a completely different name and a completely different address and a completely different Nebraska city. My daughter trusted that officer to do what was right. Turns out the driver of that vehicle didn't even have a license on them. There were no tickets issued. Are you surprised when on Monday, the insurance company called me and said that the insurance in their registration was invalid? My vehicle has five thousand to ten thousand dollars worth of damage. Shame on you. I can't get a call back from the northeast, the northwest precinct. Their voicemail is free or full, excuse me. There's no accountability. I am angry.
Time, thank you. Aaron Moulton, followed by Raymond Gerst.
Hello, my name is Aaron Moulton and I prefer not to give my address. I moved here two years ago with a company named D.R. Horton. We're the largest home building company in the United States of America. We build one out of every nine houses in the United States every single year, which is about a hundred thousand homes. The company moved me here to fix the housing problem. And so in Omaha, Nebraska, in the metro area, there's about ten thousand residential lots that do not have a house built on them. And what happened is, is with three percent mortgage rates, sixty-eight percent of homeowners have an interest rate under four percent on their house right now. So people can't afford to sell their house that has gone up tremendously in value because they don't want to move into a more expensive house at a seven and a half percent interest rate right now. The solution is found in lowering the cost of building a house on those ten thousand lots that are sitting out there. I sat at the governor's office about two months ago. He asked me to make a top ten list of things that we face building a house in the state of Nebraska that we don't face in other states. That list is still going. It's more than ten. Twenty-six percent of the price of a new house is tied directly to regulation and the city of Omaha is known to be the most restrictive plumbing codes in the United States of America. So if you want to try and fix your plumbing pipes in your house, good luck. What I would say is, the solution is found in free market and also in unleashing the workers and what's out there right now. And so in my opinion, if we go out there and
Fifteen seconds.
And, and allow companies like ours to build houses at an affordable price, we can help lower the tax burden. If we can put a home on those ten thousand empty lots, or the builders around Omaha can do that, it'll help lower property taxes for everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Gerst, followed by Bruce Lawrence. Is it Raymond Gerst or Raymond Geist? Okay, Bruce Lawrence. And then after that is Mary Lotovic.
Hello, my name is Bruce Lawrence. I live at fifty-five twenty-nine North One Sixtieth Avenue. Our tax assessment went up nineteen percent this year. It went up seventeen percent last year. It's averaged about nine percent over the ten years we've been there. So I would say to the mayor, if she was still here and her representatives are, they can let her know that I said this, she was just lying. And she's playing the same game. I lived thirty years in Chicago and the governance there is every bit as bad as you've heard. And now I see the same game being played here. You have the mill levy and you have assessments. And if one of them is left unchanged, everyone in political office or in working for the public says, wow, we didn't raise your taxes, even if the other one went up. It's just baloney. Now you guys are, I guess, feel like you're doing your penance, sitting, sitting there listening to all of us that are upset. But I don't think you're doing your jobs. I think the governments and the bureaucracies and the cities and then state level and even worse at national level have become filled with grifters that are feeding at the trough. If you've been in office more than eight years, that's longer than the president's allowed to stay on, you need to get out of office. Something needs to be done to deal with spending and that needs to be the very first priority. And then you figure out
Fifteen seconds.
How to tax people in order to pay it. You don't just build out what it is you want, what everybody can kind of agree to, and then go shove the taxes down the people's throat. And for all of us out here that are angry about this, you're right to be angry. Speak to your neighbors, start speaking out. Don't reelect anyone to a position. You put somebody new in every elected position.
Thank you. Mary Lotovic. There, Mary Lotovic. All right. Wayne Liu. Wayne Liu. Okay. Robert Smith. Robert Smith. Okay. Jose Chavez. Jose Chavez. Timothy Ellis. Timothy Ellis. Okay. Miguel Alvaldez. Miguel Alvaldez. Okay. Jacoila Yarborough. Jacoila, let's see here, okay. John Schmattiki.
Good evening. My name is John Schmattiki. I'm not going to give my address. You guys go through these proposed tax increases, I want you guys to resign, every one of you, at the end of that day. Every one of you to resign. And I want you to put papers on the taxpayers and say, hey, you guys were right. You guys work for the taxpayer. The taxpayer does not work for you. Yet there's a problem, we need to deal with it. You guys are the reasons these taxes, these taxes went up. And they're going up so much. My property went up so much, I don't even know if I can afford it. But here's what I'm going to do. I've contacted my mortgager and told him, don't pay the property taxes. I'll pay for, pay them. And I'll go down here to the taxpayer and I'll say, hey, this is what I'm going to give you. This is what the property is worth, not what you guys say. So at the end of the day, when you guys decide to vote for this stuff, I want you to realize that if you vote yes, resign immediately. You do the taxpayer a big favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Roosevelt Lee. Followed by Aaron Colby.
My name is Roosevelt Lee and I'm a property owner. I also own Colonial Properties LLC. And the property that I was, come down to talk about was forty-nine eighteen Ames Avenue, apartment building there. And, you know, just spending so much property taxes on this building, you know? I can't keep my motto that I had when I started my business about fifteen or sixteen years ago. It says, to provide quality living at an affordable price. Well, it's hard to, you know, provide affordable price when you're getting hit with real high taxes and lately, high utilities and insurance. Like last year, I, you know, I'm going to just say Berkshire Hathaway, I had their insurance on it and it went up double, went up one hundred percent. And, and I didn't keep them, I had to go get another one, but I didn't get the, I didn't get the, the, quite the deal that I have with Berkshire Hathaway. Matter of fact, the deductible was like seventy thousand dollars, you know? I was used to paying like seven and eight thousand dollars, but it went up to seventy thousand dollars so it wouldn't get hit with hail damage or anything like that. And so they're only covering like fire if I get a fire. But my mortgage company accepted it. But anyway, I, I
Fifteen seconds.
You know, the tenants I have are low income and they really cannot afford rent increases like, it's like on the market value right now, you know? Most of these people make less than twenty thousand dollars a year. And so taxes go up, you know, then I have to raise the rent.
Time, sir.
And it just, it just does not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I might have said Aaron, but I think it's Tony Colby. And then after that, that is Mike Lovejoy.
Hey, how you doing tonight? My name's Tony Colby. I'll wave my address. I'm in Sarpy County, Bellevue, so I guess Douglas County doesn't matter to me. I'm here for OPS and MUD. Currently, my taxes are proposed to go up almost three thousand dollars just for OPS and MUD. Doesn't count other taxes either. I didn't know I was going to walk into all this. Basically, what's going to happen is my 401K got cut in half just like everybody else's. We'll all get less money for retirement and then they're going to take everything else away from us. You want to keep taxing us and ask us for more money, OPS, you guys need to say no. We're learning to do more with less. Less money, less products, less everything. Why can't everybody else do that same thing? OPS needs to learn to do more with less, learn to be more creative with how they spend their money. It's, it's getting ridiculous for everybody. And that's all I got to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Lovejoy, followed by Janzel Garcia. Mike Lovejoy in the audience. Okay, Janzel Garcia. Okay, Janzel Garcia.
Hi, my name is Janzel Garcia. I'll be waving my address. I'll try to keep it brief. So, one of the things that was mentioned during the presentation and that everybody here has been talking about is the fact that, of course, property values have gone up. And, I mean, even if you don't modify anything in your house, right, property values go up because other houses sell, right, and demand goes up and what have you. However, just because property values go up, that doesn't mean that people suddenly make more money, nor does it mean that suddenly a ton of new expenses appear for, you know, OPS or for anyone else. So, I mean, it stands to reason that if a house, my house, for whatever reason, suddenly went up to $1 million, that doesn't mean that my salary went up to compensate for that, nor does that mean that I'd be able to afford it. In any case, what I really wanna talk about, I'll probably only need like a minute about it for this, is where's all this money going, right? So we actually went ahead and we saw some pie charts and stuff, but that really gives us some really big-picture numbers. It doesn't really give us a breakdown of where this money is disappearing to. And for some reason, Omaha seems to be a really special place, because as our valuations go up and as tax income goes up, suddenly, so do all of the expenses. Suddenly, there's just not enough money to cover everything, so more money is needed. And so next year, we can expect another tax increase, because more money will be needed again. So I was thinking about this, actually. My wife, she's a nurse, she works for, she's actually a contracted nurse who works for OPS. And we did some digging and found out that OPS spends $65 per hour per contracted nurse. That totals about $97,000 a year per contracted nurse. Meanwhile, OPS's nurses get paid about $45,000 a year. That's a lot of inefficiency right there. That's a lot of, and that's to say nothing of the iPads, which somebody else already brought up. So the question then is, do you need more money? Or is there just a way of being more efficient with the money that you already have? My guess is that it's going to be the latter. Here's a piece of advice, right? Just be more efficient, stop asking for more money. I know it's easier to ask for more money than it is to solve problems. My advice would be, you know, just do what you would do if you were in our positions. You would never tax yourselves out of your own homes. I wouldn't sleep at night if I were you guys. Thank you.
Aaron Holmberg, followed by Jessica P.
I'm Aaron Holmberg, gonna wave the address. I've lived in three different states throughout my career. Since I moved back six years ago, my property taxes have gone up 51% since I moved here. This year alone, it's 19%. For comparison, when I lived in Oklahoma City, I am now paying 300% more property taxes for a less respectable house. So, when I moved back, in addition, I accumulated another $10,000 a year in tax burden as well. So, this is why we call this the tax me state. I started a business this year, not expecting another $600 a year in property taxes, so that kind of puts a kink in my budget. So, in doing that, when I have a business, can I just go to my customers and raise their prices 51%? No, they leave. They'll leave my company. I won't, I won't have a business anymore. And in such, if we keep driving taxes up and keep demanding this of our citizens, people like me, like, I would like to think I'm a respectable citizen. I pay my taxes, I have a good job outside of the state. I couldn't find a good job in the state. I have to do business outside of the state to get a good enough income to afford this. But I'm prepared to leave soon enough, when the stars align, because I cannot keep affording these taxes. This is ridiculous. We are, if you look up the tax rate for the Midwest, we are a shining star as far as taxes go. Every other state around us is not nearly as bad.
15 seconds.
For the roads, the facilities, whatever, my valuation went up $60,000 this year. I, my neighborhood is going in the dumpster. I got a car across the street, 120 decibels every single morning wakes me up. I cannot, nor can any of my neighbors, get the police interested in doing anything about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Jessica P., followed by Robert Wilson. Jessica P.? Oh, there we go.
My name's Jessica Dobash. Is that it?
Uh, no.
No.
Sorry.
Can I go for that?
Robert, Robert Wilson? Sorry. And then Natalia Bachenberg after that.
Hey, Bob Wilson. 20, 1922 South 35th Avenue. The house is, was built in 1878. There was some improvements made since then. But none of them worth $94,000 assessment increase this year. Isn't there a limit on that? Is there a limit on? You know, if you didn't build a whole nother house in the backyard, or what's the deal? 90, $94,000 assessment increase. I'm not much of a speaker. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Natalia Bachenberg, followed by Mike Lovejoy. Natalia Bachenberg? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Natalia Bachenkova. Is that right?
Yes, sorry.
I figured I was probably the only Natalia here. Alright, like I said, hi, I'm Natalia Bachenkova. I'll be waving my address today. Thank you all for all that you have done to lower our tax burden. We definitely need it. I've lived in four other states, including DC, and this is by far, by far, the most expensive state I've lived in. But I'm not here to complain about taxes. We definitely need them. We need our teachers to be paid well. We need our law enforcement. We need drivable roads, not the streetcar, but we do need drivable roads. In fact, I'd actually vouch for more taxes for the public schools, in particular, because taxes are not the problem. Property valuation is. We need predictability. I'm 28. I'm on a fully funded merit scholarship. I grew up in a family of five, living in $24,000. We were never rich, so I know how to handle money. I bought a house here last year, because I worked three jobs. I saved that merit scholarship. And I bought a house here because I could afford it. I could afford to pay myself, because who in the state can afford to rent right now? I certainly couldn't. But I could afford to buy a house because I could protect my income and I can control my expenses. That's what everybody in this room does. We predict, we plan, and we control. But I cannot predict the property value increases, and I have no control over them. I haven't done a single improvement to my house, and my evaluation went up 16% this year and more than 20% last year, after I just purchased it. And clearly, my numbers aren't even the extremes. I now more than, pay more than 60% of my income directly to mortgage and escrow. Again, weirdly, I'm not asking for tax cuts. I'm asking for predictability. I'm asking you to do what it takes to cap the annual property valuation increases.
Thank you. Mike Lovejoy, followed by Dennis Coley.
Mike, Mike Lovejoy, 1711, yeah, 17110 Karen Street. The problem isn't property evaluations. Property evaluation is just a driver here. The problem comes down is when you get the property evaluations, you do not effectively change the levy to reflect that increase. Don't fool us about, say, we're not increasing your levy. You are increasing it by not increasing it, because if the property tax went up 18%, you should automatically reduce your levy by 18%. And if you need more money at that point in time, come talk to the voters of the district. Don't just shell game this thing and hide it under an increased levy because you're getting this cash windfall with a property evaluation increase. Don't fool us. We're intelligent people. We can understand that. Reduce it, and then come back to us and tell us if you need more money for other projects, other programs going on. But don't just expect the well to continue to pump and well to continue to give you water. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Coley, followed by Scott Yonkey. Dennis Coley? Scott Yonkey?
It's been a long evening, and you guys are holding up pretty good for getting beat on like you have. Scott Yonkey, 11902 Ashwood Drive, Bennington, where our city council has the highest mill levy in the state, as Jim Bokel of Platte Institute has informed me. And we spend about $20,000 a month on governing by consulting fees. And having said that, you know, we lived, 15 years ago, we had a recession. Took about three years for home values, valuations to come down. And that was quickly ended when we started to pull out of the recession, and property values started to go up. I worked for 33 years as a teacher in OPS and taught over 3,500 kids. And I'm gonna say, I did my darndest to give my kids a quality educational experience and teach them about American history and the Constitution. And particularly like, things like the Northwest Ordinance was set up, the public school system, and the intrinsic value of the opportunity of a public education. So I'll stand up for that. But I also tell you, my, my valuation went up about $50,000 last year or this year. You know, I started teaching, I was getting $50, $75 annual raises when the oil embargo hit. I was contributing 250 a month to my pension in 2006, the last year I taught. I'm trying to live on my income right now, and it's tough. I'm just gonna ask you to sharpen your pencils and go back to school, go back to work on these mill levies, and really try to listen to the oldsters here. I'm one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Niebo? And then after that, Velvet Grouche.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Nieba. I've been in Nebraska four years. Lived in Kearney, then moved to Omaha last year. When my wife and I did our property, our income tax
Sue, are you waving your address?
Yes, please.
Okay.
When my wife and I did our income tax on the first year of staying in Nebraska, it was part California, part Nebraska. And after the taxes were run, we realized that the taxes in the state taxes were higher than those in California. We were blown away, because people who live in California thought Nebraska was cheaper. That's not true. Now, when we bought our property in Omaha last year, the person who ran the, 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 the paperwork told us our neighborhood had not been taxed. The property taxes had not been increased in that neighborhood for about six years. The question I have now is, during those six years, did the public schools have no increases in budgets? And if they did, why was that neighborhood not taxed? Why did the property taxes not go up during those six years? And only went up immediately after we bought our property, middle of last year. We had an increase like September, and then December, something else came up. And then, the next question I want to ask is, for the properties that are affected within the city, do, do, do we consider specific groups of people like single moms who have kids and probably have no corresponding increase in salaries? Do we consider people like elderly, retired? Do we consider people like federal employees, who, whose basic salary doesn't compare with when the private sector? And who mustered the courage to purchase a home just to live a modest life with their kids?
Time.
Why do we even tax public schools? Why do we levy properties, taxes on public schools? That's a question somebody raised earlier.
Time, thank you, sir.
It's very important. Thank you.
Velvet Grouche, and then Mary Kate Yablonsky.
Hello, I'm Velvet Grouche. I wave my address. I am here in opposition of yet another increase. Last year was almost a tipping scale for me and my family, and I'm raising three children, my three children here. My income did not change. I am on a fixed income. And I am literally deciding that I don't even think I can keep my house. And what for? So I can give more money to the city of Omaha? So that, where can we go live, you know? I don't see how we can sell our house, get out of the situation we're in, buy something cheaper that we can afford. I bought my house six years ago. My mortgage actually is only, it's under $1,000, but because of now the increases, my property insurance and property taxes have gone up. I now pay over $1,100 as of right now, more than my actual mortgage payment per month. And I'm on a fixed income. How do you expect people to keep making it? I mean, I am struggling, and I am not alone, as everybody else here has mentioned. I don't think that you guys can keep doing these, this stuff to people every single year. And I'm not seeing any benefits from this. And I do agree taxes are necessary, but there is a limit, and this is too far. This is too far. My son would like to say something for a moment, please? Oh, he signed up on the paper. He'll be called later. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Kate Yablonsky, followed by Ilana Singh. Mary Kate Yablonsky? Okay, Ilana Singh? Ilana Singh? Okay. Richard Jurecki Douglas? And then after that, Tom Klemish.
Rich Jurecki, I'll wave my address, but Elkhorn. Wanna talk about budgeting. I spent 40 years in industry, and every year, my budget was expected to go down through cost savings, cost avoidance, more efficiency. Especially when your, your volumes went up, like the property value has gone up, all the budgets on a per case or per, however you wanna look at it, mill levy should go way down. Having two of these Douglas County and Metro Community Colleges exceed the state mandated or recommended, and even, even trying to justify that, it's just unattainable. Me and my wife retired, moved back here for the good life. Beginning to think the new motto, Nebraska's not for everybody, is a better motto. We're seeing, we seen a $90,000 increase, 19% increase in our property value. And people are just jumping on the bandwagon and running their budgets up, feeling they, they got this free money coming because there's a valuation increase. You should be looking at, your costs should be going down every year. And if an industry, if you didn't do that, you were out of business, or someone replaced you. Need to think about that.
Thank you. Tom Klemish, followed by Anthony Flowers. Tom Klemish. Anthony Flowers. Anthony Flowers. Larry Sampier. And then after that, looks like Garrett Mueller, or Grant Mueller.
Larry Sampier, 12111 Shirley Street, Omaha. I think the problem, as somebody said, is not necessarily the valuation. It's the levy. So if my assessment goes up $30,000, my taxes are gonna go up. Not because the levy increased, but because the valuation increased. That shouldn't be. I like the idea of lowering the levy. That would lower our taxes. Do more with less. Become more efficient. Don't just expect that the golden goose out here, which is what is, what we are to you, and of course, you're the and of course, you're the golden goose too, because you pay taxes, are gonna be around forever. There's a limit, like many of the people have said. Be aware of it. Do something about it. There is something called diminishing returns. We may be seeing the start of it. There's a lot of unhappy people here. It's your job to make us happy. Do it.
Thank you. Grant Mueller? Garrett or Grant Mueller? Okay, Marvin Smith? Marvin Smith? Jimmy, or Annie Drain? Annie Drain? Okay. Mary Ryan? Mary Ryan? Gianna Justison? No, oh, okay, thank you. Irma Vilikas? Irma Vilikas? Okay. Jesus Vilikas? Jesus Vilikas? Okay. Todd Smolin? Todd Smolin? Okay. Adam Homestead? Adam Homestead? Jimmy Lynn? Jimmy Lynn? Rose Nivia?
N-I-E-D?
Okay, yes. Yep. Sorry about that. Yep. And then it looks like Shane Melrose after that. Okay.
Been sitting too long.
So after Rose, if there's a Otis Brakefield?
Hi, you guys. Rose Nide. I live in Douglas County, I wave my address. But I am gonna say that this says proposed tax increase. And I hope you guys take that under consideration. Because proposed means it's not done yet. And I really hope you've listened to everybody that's been here tonight, because we are not happy. I happen to be a Realtor, and I listen to people all the time that keep saying that they're about ready to lose their house, or they're gonna lose their house. My aunt, she's 95 years old. She's lived in the same house for over 60 years. She hasn't had anything done to her house since 1970s. And her tax valuation went up $86,000 this year alone. That's insane. I'm sorry, it's insane. The things that I would like to propose is, I don't, I am not against education. Don't think I'm against education. But I think that the way that you guys, the OPS is being funded, is absolutely incorrect. It needs to go to the senators, it needs to go to the governors. We need new laws that get passed so that you guys are capped at 1% to 3% a year to have our taxes put up. There's other means of paying for it. Introduce gambling, introduce medical marijuana. Get taxes from somewhere else to pay for your OPS. And look at other ideas. Look at other states, what they're doing. Start doing something else besides screwing us. You know, I'm sorry, but I am a senior citizen. And by the way, most of the people here, I've heard that came up here, some of them don't even know there's Homesteadic exceptions in this state. And that's a crying shame. So I think you guys aren't doing your job. And when I looked at statistics, it said that
15 seconds.
28% of the students were, oh god, where is it? 28% anyway. They were not proficient in reading, and 20% were not proficient in math. There's a problem.
Time.
You guys, I'm sorry, but I'm upset.
Thank you. Shane Melrose? Okay. Otis Brakefield? Sorry, Sandy, you told me twice he was gone.
Hello. My name is Otis Brakefield, I like to wave my address. I really don't have eye water to cry with, with some of the people dealing with houses, but I happen to be an entrepreneur where I buy land plots and try to get them predeveloped to sell them, and that kind of works out for me. But when I do get into a position where I would have a home, the land plots are just out of control, you know. You buy a land plot, we'll just say $900, you're paying $20 taxes. Then the next thing you know, after four years, it goes up to $6,500. And then, that's $146 and some odd cents. And then the next thing you know, it's at $10,700 value. So it's kind of like the start of where they're at now. So I'm not understanding why a vacant land plot where you don't even have a fence around it, if you did put up a fence, if you cut trees down, you gotta keep it maintained. How does that come into figuration that this property stayed at one price for four years, then after that, the fifth year goes to this, then the sixth year, it's at a whole new high? So I'm not quite getting what's going on with the land plots. And like I said, I don't have eye water to cry with when some of these people have homes, but I can feel their pain. Thank you.
Thank you. Garam Sudabek? Is there a Garam Sudabek? All right. Andrea Zardato Smith? Andrea Zardato Smith? Okay, then Brandon Groch. And that is, he's the last individ, you can keep coming forward, Brandon. That's the last individ? Oh, I know, I was gonna, after I, after Brandon speaks, I'll open it up to other people who either maybe I mispronounced their name, or they didn't get a chance to check in the sign-in sheet, I'll just, but I won't be calling names forward anymore. We'll just kind of, first come, first served, I guess, after Brandon, so.
I signed at the back, but I decided not to speak.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Brandon Groch, and I'm gonna wave my address. I just turned 18 14 days ago, and I don't know a whole lot about adulting yet, because again, it's been 14 days. But I do know that there are a lot of things that an 18-year-old has to worry about. Worrying about being the only stable financial income for your family should not be one of them. And it never should, not in a million years. And the fact that my wonderful mom, who does her best every single day, comes up here and like, she, she has a very bad back condition. Sometimes in the morning, she's just physically unable to get up. And she comes up onto this podium, and she starts crying because of the pressure that is being put on her by these taxes. That is not okay. We are struggling to make ends meet, and you want to increase our taxes for what? Lord knows it isn't education, because I go to school every single day, and I don't feel the slightest bit more educated. I just feel the symptoms red. There's nothing here anymore, and it just feels like it's gonna keep getting worse. Aren't you guys supposed to protect families? Isn't that your guys' job? Why are you not following through? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll...
I wanna know why you didn't call my name, I have a very common name, Harvey Berkeley. And you didn't call my name. And I checked, I checked the box.
I apologize, sir. She had signed in too, apparently, and I must have missed her name, so you can go after this young lady up front here. I apologize, I didn't mean to, if I missed anyone's name, it was a complete accident, I apologize.
Thank you. My name's Jessica Dobash, I'm gonna wave my address. I live in North Omaha. Randy, I really appreciate your transparency. I've been doing a lot of research on a lot of budgets, and your college budget is like the only one that you can actually read. The city budget is absolutely hard to find. OPS, you can't find what they spend their money on. But here's something they spent something on. They spent $67,000 on some pool cleaners, you know, for Benson. And then they mismanaged a bunch of funds for some retirement pensions. There's $1.8 million that they overpaid people. Are they having to pay back their money? I haven't heard anything about that. You know, there's a huge lack of accountability, there's lack of transparency, there's no consistency. And I think people are absolutely furious. And, you know, I know you guys are sitting there, and I don't know if it affects you or not, because I looked at property taxes, and half the people on the college board, their property taxes didn't go up. There's no consistency, and people don't have anybody to talk to or to find out where to go for it. You know, I homeschooled five kids for 17 years on a budget of $45,000. If you need help cutting things out of your budget, give me a call.
Thank you.
My name is Harvey Berkeley. I wave my address. I've been in Omaha for 57 years. I came here in 1966. Omaha has come a long way. I commend the officials of the state, of the city of Omaha in Nebraska. In my own personal observation, I think that for about 30 years, Omaha was dormant. They didn't do nothing. And then, within the last 20 years, they tried to recruit the city and bring it up to par like San Luis, San Diego, Memphis, Minneapolis, and Indianapolis in the last 20 years. And they put the burden on the people. Most of the things that they built, the people that are paying taxes support it, will not even be able to enjoy it. Like the Bob Carey Park, which cost 340 million. Like the bus L, it is, the streetcar, that's 370 million. Like the Bob Carey Bridge, that's 22 million. Like the library on Dodge Street, that's 72, that's 150 million. But the people right here, the taxpayers, the older people, are supporting what you are building. So you're trying to, you're not budgeting right. And you're not budgeting right, and you're not considering the people that are supporting the base.
15 seconds.
And in Omaha, North Omaha, there is a, 29% of the people in North Omaha, which is 18,000, are 29% below poverty. And when you look north and you look south, it's like two cities.
Time, sir.
It's like a third world city. And when you look south, you've got 45,000 millionaires, 45,000 millionaires in Omaha. You've got three billionaires.
Thank you, sir.
You raised
Sir, I'm sorry, we passed the
Okay, I'm gonna say this one thing, I'm saying that. You raised $5 billion. You projected, no, you raised $6 billion in taxes. You projected five, but you raised six, so you raised a billion dollars more.
All right, sir, I'm sorry.
Than you expected in taxes.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to address us? Anyone el- Anyone who hasn't had a chance to address the board yet? Or the individuals up here? Okay, go ahead.
Shane Hens, I'd like to wave my address. Not a great public speaker, but just a couple things to say. My property value went up from 306,000 to 511,000. Haven't done anything to the property since 1997, when we moved in. The problem is the 60% that we're paying OPS. Everybody, that's the problem, is OPS. I have friends that work at OPS. The amount of waste that goes on there is incredible. I've run a business, been an entrepreneur since I was 18 years old. And you gotta cut costs. You gotta watch your waste, otherwise, you're gonna not survive. That's private sector. Public sector, they can come and get it all from you. Catch your costs, watch your waste. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone who hasn't had a chance to address the board, or the individuals up here that would like to? Okay, if anyone has questions, I mean, we're gonna be here for a little bit, so you can approach us after the meeting. Sorry, I see you, sir, but you want the, you did get a chance to speak earlier, correct? And so I'll, we'll I didn't hear, but we'll, like, we'll, the representatives here will be around for a little bit if you have a question for us. So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. If you go to douglascountyclerk.org, there's a webpage there that will have the presentations that were presented and summary of the meeting. And thank you all very much for your time this evening.